Patience, I really appreciate it. I'm going to call the meeting, a special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Monday, June 21st at 7:09 PM here at the Nashville High School North Auditorium. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Sue Lovering and Alderman Jettie will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
President. Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Cleaver. Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
President.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tenza. Alderwoman Lou. Alderman Jettie. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Laws. Alderman Cleaver. Alderwoman Harriet Gathright. Alderman Mulchier.
Here.
You have eleven in attendance.
Thank you, and also this evening we have Mayor Donches, Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton, and CFO John Griffin. As is customary, I will turn this meeting over to the Chairman of the Budget Review Committee, Alderman Dowd.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien, would you like to make a motion to remove R 21142 from the table?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make the motion to take from the table, R 21142.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. R 21142 is on the table. So this evening we have a public hearing on the budget, and anything with regard to the proposed mayor's budget. When we ask for questions or comments, you can come up to the microphone here on the right, my right, and you have three minutes, and when there's 30 seconds left, I will notify you. And if it's a question, I'll ask the mayor who could answer it best, and if it's himself or Mr. Griffin or one of the department heads, they are here. So you're allowed to ask one question at a time on the division we're covering, and after everyone's had an opportunity to ask a question on that division, you could come up again if you had another question. You still have the three-minute timing. You cannot yield any time to another speaker. Each person has only three minutes. So, again, I'll be going by division. I'm going at the beginning, mentioning which departments are in that division, but you can ask a question on any one of the departments within that division.
Yes.
And before we get started on the, going through the budget, the mayor would like to do a brief overview on the FY '22 budget. Mayor Donches?
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for attending our public hearing on the fiscal 2022 budget. So as usual, I'm going to just recap a few things that have occurred during fiscal '21, and then talk about the proposed budget. So looking, so we will go to slide number one. The, just to recap some of the things which occurred during 2021, which we all know was quite a year. We, of course, the city had its COVID-19 response. Public health took the lead there. They did, from the beginning, contact tracing. Many individuals who contracted COVID-19 were treated and counseled by public health. They reached out to many, many people, and people worked seven days a week, really, for a long time. They did an extremely good job during the course of the time up to now. They've done about 7,300 COVID-19 tests at clinics outdoors and indoors throughout the city, some at the Elm Street parking garage, some in the depth of winter. More recently, the Public Health Department has been involved in administering vaccines to 18,000 or 18,000 doses. Of course, the lead response is by the state of New Hampshire, so these 18,000 doses are for people who are more difficult to reach and have not come to the clinics held by the state of New Hampshire at Nashville South, at the mall, and elsewhere. For example, the public health nurses have gone to picnics at Greeley Park and talked to people, and if they decide that they'd like to have a vaccination, a dose, they do it there. So there are many community events that they have attended and will continue to attend throughout the summer and the remainder of the year. During the course of the pandemic, the city continued to provide all city services, some of those in person, some remote. Of course, City Hall, where we had several outbreaks of COVID, was remote for some period of time, but then earlier this month, we opened City Hall to, and we were running by appointments for vehicle registration and other reasons for quite a time, but then earlier this month, we opened City Hall to visitors. We have asked people to, especially those not vaccinated, to consider wearing a mask, but there's no requirement. We did do City Hall renovations, designed to make the building more COVID-resistant, make it more disease-resistant in general, and to try to address any future pandemics that we may have. To do that, we used a little over $1 million in federal, or so-called gopher funds, which were federal funds allocated through the state of New Hampshire. Significant renovations were done in the automobile registration area, in the assessing area, in the tax area, and if you visit now, you will see that the work is going on at the city clerk's area, and that should be done within a few weeks. The departments, when the work was going on, moved up to the third floor. That's where the city clerk and her staff are now. One thing that we focused on is, in an effort to try to save money, because over the period of two years, healthcare costs went up $6 million, or around 20% in just two years. That's over fiscal '20 and '21. So we focused, and that trend seemed like it would continue. Those, you know, that $6 million increase, you know, equates to a 3% tax increase, so we really wanted to address that rising cost. So we, administrative services and others, worked to develop a new HMO plan, which has been agreed to by a whole group of employee groups, as well as implemented in City Hall. And that has saved us about $1 million over what healthcare costs would be for those six groups were it not for the revised HMO plan. Other things that have occurred during 2021, we continued the paving plan of action. We paved 26 miles of streets out of the 300 that the city has. We did about 20 miles of crack ceiling. This is a much less expensive way of preserving streets, which is much less expensive. It doesn't certainly last as long as repaving, but it can preserve a street for five years or a little longer at a much lower cost. So the idea there is to preserve streets until we can get to paving them. So far, after we're through this paving season, we will have paved, under the paving plan of action, about 125 miles of streets and many miles of the crack ceiling. One area where we really wanted to focus was, particularly early in the pandemic, was the fact that small businesses were very affected and hurt by the pandemic, by the closures, mandatory and otherwise. The city assembled in various batches about $2.5 million of federal funds, and we created a COVID-19 impact fund, which was used to extend loans and some grants to small businesses and to some nonprofits throughout the city. In addition to address the closures downtown, we expanded outdoor dining. That was authorized by the Board of Aldermen very early in the pandemic, in the spring of last year, April-May timeframe. I think it went into effect in early May. And as a result, according to at least one of the largest restaurateurs downtown, we probably saved many businesses by doing that. That has turned out to be a very popular success. We've received a lot of positive impact, a lot of positive feedback on that, and we have many, many more people downtown than ever before as a result of it. Also, we are about to complete public health building renovations. This is a project that has been discussed and in the works for at least probably a decade. That will, they will occupy the new, it's a renovated space over at Mulberry Street. They will occupy that really within about a week. Another project that we've undertaken during the pandemic is the Imagine Nashville Master Plan. Of course, the master plan is a document, a land use document required by state of New Hampshire, so periodically it's necessary to update the master plan. The last one was about in year 2000, so it's been about 20 years. And that was an interesting exercise, an interesting project, because normally, of course, all of the meetings would be held in person, which could not be done during the pandemic. But a benefit or an interesting side effect of the pandemic and the remote participation in the master plan is that we were, because it was done remotely, we had a lot more public input than we have in prior, with respect to prior master plans. We had hundreds of people involved, people who probably might not have taken the time to go down to City Hall or somewhere else to attend in person. They attended remotely and provided their input, and that will eventually, in the next few months, result in a master plan document. We're still taking public input, so anybody who's interested and wants to put in their two cents worth regarding any of the areas of the city that we're looking at, please, you know, you're certainly, we encourage you to do so. Now let's go on to the budget that I proposed. The budget that I proposed is about, that I proposed to the Board of Aldermen, and of course, the way this works is that departments submit budgets to me, and then I make changes or not, and I pass it on to the Board of Aldermen, the mayor's proposed budget. They are the, basically, the final decision-maker, subject to veto, subject to veto and override. So the budget is up 7.9, excuse me, 7.5 million to 290 million, but I would like to stress that more than half of that increase was as a result of the state of New Hampshire's pension cost increase. Were it not for that, the state, the city budget would be up, as I proposed, at about $3.1 million, or a little over 1%. Now unfortunately, we, the state really slammed, is really going to slam the state of New Hampshire, the state of New Hampshire is really going to slam the city, our city, as well as cities and towns across New Hampshire during fiscal '22. One could argue at the worst possible time. These pension costs are going up. Our bill will now be nearly $29 million. Now this is unrelated to any increase in wages. Sometimes people say that, oh, well, you shouldn't increase wages so much. This has nothing to do with wage increases. In fact, the city pensions, the state pension system will tell you that 80% of the money we're paying in, in other words, 80% of 29 million, is to just build up their assets. They were fully funded around 2001. They mismanaged the system. A big mess resulted, and now the cities and towns are being forced to pay to correct the state's mistakes. So again, $24 million of taxpayer money from the hard-working taxpayers of Nashville is going, 24 million of the 29, is going to compensate for the state's mistakes, and that will continue into the indefinite future. The other thing that happened is that the state of New Hampshire reduced school aid by $7.4 million, a big hit during the pandemic. Now if you total those two actions, that is the pension increase and the decrease in school aid, you come up with about $11.8 million, a negative impact to the city's taxpayers. That equates to a 5.5% tax increase. So going into the budget, we really had to take a hard look because we needed to try to compensate, offset some of this, some of this increase, some of this increase in expenses and reduction in revenue being imposed by the state of New Hampshire. And on to the next slide. With the budget that I have proposed, if it were, and we're going to talk about more of the details in a moment, but if it were not for the state, the actions that they've taken in increasing expenses and cutting revenue, Nashville's tax rate for fiscal '22 would actually be flat and probably down, but we have to try to make up to some degree, we have to, but we have to deal with this $11.8 million. So, at the beginning of the budget, I asked all departments but for one, which I will mention, to come in with no more than a 0% increase, to try to compensate for what the state has, you know, is doing. And because we were in the middle of the pandemic, unemployment, at least at that point, was very high. There were a lot of people out of work, and it seemed like, you know, many people in distress. So we needed to propose a very tight budget. I did, for one department, that being the school department, ask for a different guideline, and that was, without pension and benefits, I asked for a 1.7% instead of, 1.5%, sorry, 1.5% instead of zero. And the reason for that was the disruption that they have, that they suffered as a result of the pandemic, the effect on children, the, you know, education for our kids is a right, not a privilege. Every kid deserves an excellent school, and certainly the remote online learning was a challenge for both teachers, who worked very hard, and many students. So the idea there was to allow them a little more slack to try to compensate for all the disruption that had occurred. Now, this slide shows you, so I asked for zero, remember that, and 1.6, 1.5% excluding pensions and benefits for the schools. So here's what, in the end, I proposed, because you will see that the departments over which I have more direct control certainly complied with and exceeded the 0% guideline. Those that run by independent commissions or boards or the like didn't necessarily agree or comply with a 0% proposed idea. So for the City Hall departments and Department of Public Works and the library, City Hall is actually down, will be down, 2.85% from the current year. We did that through the health changes, through the elimination of duplication, so thank you to City Hall and all of our employees there who've worked very hard and helped the taxpayers in this way. The DPW, Department of Public Works, basically the same thing. We eliminated some unfilled positions, made some economies, and their budget for fiscal '22 is down, down 1.28% below the current year. Library as well, they're down 1.94%. So thank you to all of those departments, Department of Public Works, City Hall, and the library. Police and fire, and I will mention a little bit, I'll show you what the proposed increases are in a minute, but the fire department requested a 4% increase, the police department about 2.6. Now I've been suggesting to both, all of our outside departments that, and for several years, that they were building in costs which were not sustainable, and that we would ultimately reach the point where we'd either have to cut services or rise, or raise taxes significantly, and it seems we may be at that point now. So I didn't feel that the, especially given all these discussions over several years, I didn't feel that we could afford those increases. On the other hand, these are very important departments. We all respect the work that our fire and police departments do for the city, so I proposed a compromise with each of them. Instead of the 0% increase that I had suggested, instead of the 2.8% reduction like for City Hall, I said, okay, look, how about a cost of living increase? Cost of living is 1.7, so for each of those two departments, I proposed a 1.7% increase. For the school department, things are a little more complicated, because although this suggests a 2.29% increase, they proposed 2.39 with healthcare. But the thing you should keep in mind is that under the teacher's contract, and our teachers, based upon comparisons with other districts, are underpaid. We're about 60th in the districts of New Hampshire. About 60 districts pay more than Nashville does. But of the, of the 2.1, so this includes the healthcare, but healthcare is not resolved for our largest employer, employee group, those being the teachers, because that's in negotiations now. If the teachers were to adopt the healthcare plan proposed by the city, that number would drop from 2.29 to about 1.6%. And so that's in discussions, in negotiation, we'll see how that comes out, but unlike the other departments where healthcare is a fixed, we know what's going to happen, we don't know, there's nothing agreed to on either side with respect to healthcare for the school department. So overall, they really did what I asked, and what, without the benefits, without healthcare, they came in at 1.7. I'd asked for 1.5, so there again, I proposed a compromise, split the difference at 1.6. And if you go to the next page, which Mr. Griffin is going to get for us, this just gives you some of the detail, it just shows you what the detailed numbers are, and you see the same percentages on the right-hand column that you saw on the previous slide. But again, it just gives you what the raw numbers are. Now, just to review what the departments requested, again, the fire department requested a 4% increase, my budget proposes 1.7, police 2.59, my budget proposes 1.7, and the school department requested, again, with the assumption that the healthcare would not change, but it very well might, I think everybody will, it will benefit everyone, including if it does, but we, that, they proposed 2.38, my proposal was 2.29 with the healthcare or 1.6 without it. So that kind of shows you more of the detail again. Now, I thought it was interesting to show you the 6%, the six-year budget analysis, because I have been saying in various state of the cities and budget discussions all over the place, that building these budgets that are not sustainable is going, is, you know, there's going to be an end to this, there has to be. And over the last six years, you can see what's happened. There's a significant difference in the amount that the budgets has been raised over the last six years. Fire department is the most, 27%. Now that's, if, if, if their 4% raise is agreed to by the Aldermen, then that will be a 27% increase over six years. If my budget held, it would be more like 25% over six years. Police, same deal, 21%. Schools, 17.9, again, if their proposed budget is adopted, not mine. City Hall, 16 or almost 17, but still, you know, 10% below the top. BPW, 15, and the library, you know, almost 12. DPW, almost 16. But you can see that, and I had this in mind when I proposed some of these guidelines, it occurred, you know, I certainly had in mind that, you know, over time, not that these percentages should be absolutely equal, but we need to, you know, all of these services are important, and we need at least to have in mind what we've done in the past to decide what we can afford and where the most needs are in the future. That gives you, I think, an overview of the numbers and the increase. I'd like to stress again, oh, one more thing. Fortunately for us, there's funds coming through the, from the federal government through the most recent act that was passed, and so the budget suggests that we would apply about $4.4 million to replace some of this lost school revenue. But if you, and that will help us get it below that 5.5% increase imposed by the state of New Hampshire. So thank you to the federal government, the American Rescue Plan, helping to rescue us. Now if, but, if we left, I'm going to stress one more time what that one slide said. If we could eliminate these actions by the state, if we could just keep those things the same, without the federal government, this tax rate would be lower and probably down coming this fall, but this, the 11.8 million from the state of New Hampshire is a lot of money to make up and to try to maintain quality services. So looking forward, which is our last slide here, we are going to continue with the paving plan of action. City got way behind in terms of its infrastructure, in terms of paving, and we are trying to catch up, and I think we've done a lot in that direction, but still, we have streets that are not, some streets that are not in good shape, so we need to try to press forward and continue with the 20 to 25 miles a year threshold that we've been reaching. The, another thing we're pushing for is to try to increase tax revenues and deal with a housing crisis, a shortage of housing at all levels of affordability. So we are, we are optimistic that we can complete the school street housing, 150 units, that's market rate housing. that's market rate housing. A Henry Hanger conversion, that's 88 units, again, market rate. But also a Bronstein redevelopment, which we've agreed to with the Housing Authority, they've been very innovative in developing, developing a financial plan to increase the affordable units on Bronstein and increase the number from about 48 units to something over 200 units. So I think it's a, it's an increase of about 160. That will be helpful, but we still have a housing crisis, we still have a shortage of housing, and we need to add housing wherever we can. There are other smaller projects that we're working on, things that are in not quite the final stages that those are, and of course, we'll be talking about those in the future. The middle school upgrade project, the expansion of Fairgrounds Middle School, which has already occurred, the work at Pennechuck, which is going on now, and then the construction of a new middle school out on Buck Meadow Road, which is a less expensive, still a lot of money, but a less expensive way to go than trying to refit Elm Street. That's an important project for the city. We're trying to upgrade the middle schools, and when we finish, there will be a, we'll have state-of-the-art schools, all powered by electric, electrically at least, by solar. Rick Dowd, Alderman Rick Dowd is Chair of the Joint Special School Building Committee, which is overseeing those projects. And we will be moving forward with a riverfront master plan that was adopted some time ago to enhance the beauty of the Nashville River, which of course is a wonderful natural asset that the city has right in the core of downtown. Now, I think that gives you an overview, and of course, we're here to listen to comments and answer any questions, so I will turn things back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just before we, before we get going, just a couple of things. I would prefer that people restrain from using any city employees' names, rather use a position, because the Board of Aldermen can only add or cut positions, they cannot hire or fire any employees. So we're talking about the budget, so let's keep it to that. The other thing is, on the 51 accounts, the salaries and wages, that is by, either by union contract, a non-affiliated legislation, so those are fixed as long as it's the same number of employees. And the 52 fringe and benefits is also set under the guidelines by City Hall and are not in the purview of that particular department. Again, just reiterating the rules as we go along, when I open up a division, I will mention which departments are in that division, and you can ask a question on any one of the departments, come up to the microphone. Please try to socially distance six feet apart when you're, if you're in line. You can ask one question at a time on that division, and you have three minutes, and when you have 30 seconds left, we'll give you a warning. Please do not extend over that, because we have other people that wish to speak. When everyone's had an opportunity for that division, if you have another question on that division, you can come back up and ask the question again, same thing, one question, three minutes. You can also not yield any time to another speaker. Okay, the first division that we're going to cover is the General Government Division. It's Department 101, the mayor's office, 102, the Board of Aldermen, 103, the Legal Department, 107, the City Clerk's Office, 108, Energy Management, 109, Civic Community Activities, 131, Hunt Building, 158, Parking Enforcement, and 183, Economic Development. Excuse me, 166 Parking Operations and 183 Economic Development. That particular, particular division has a lot of departments, but most of them are relatively small, and the, you can ask a question on revenue or appropriations. Is there anyone that has any questions on General Government Division? Please give your name and address for the record.
Fred Tebow, 24 Cheyenne, former Alderman large, elected twice. First of all, where does the three minutes come from? I've never heard of that before.
It's by legislation passed by the Board of Aldermen.
On public hearings?
Yes.
Well, that makes it a very difficult public hearing. I thought there was no limit on the public hearing.
Well, we found with all the public hearings that we've had, that three minutes doesn't seem to limit people if they have a question.
We'll have to change that, we'll have to get around to change that. What I want to do, you skip to page 54, but I want to skip to an earlier page, like page 10. Resume the budget here. And I know that Mayor Don just made a presentation, charts I could hardly read, but he, on page 10, and I think page 9, he did something interesting. He compared the departments taking out the pensions and Medicare and Social Security. That's a very unusual way to compare departments, maybe you do that for internal purposes, but I'm a taxpayer, I don't have that much interest, I knowledge about, I don't have that much interest in how you manage things internally. What I'm interested in is how you pay, how many taxes I have to pay. When I look at the budget, what I did is, I took the current budget, I had to go to City Hall to get a copy of the budget, I don't see there's any of them here, and then I got my 21 budget out, which is on the backside, and I made that comparison. And I came up, Mayor, with a completely different conclusion than you did. First of all, the Police Department increase between this budget and last year's budget is 6.6%. The Fire Department, 9.1% increase. The School Department, a 3.5% increase. All you do is take the budget for that department this year and the budget for that department last year, take the difference, and compute the percentage increase. That's not 1%, it's 6% for the Police, 9% for the Fire, 3% for the schools. City Hall, 2% only. And DPW took a hit, they've only shown 1%. So there's nothing equitable about this budget. The general fund increase is 2.6%, which is about a percentage over the inflation rate. There's no cap right now, but I just got notice today that the governor, Senator Noonan, signed the cap. The cap is back, folks.
30 seconds.
The cap is back. By the way, when I come back, you only got 30 seconds?
Yep.
I can come back a second time, the third time, the fourth time, correct? The total appropriations, it's a combination of taxes and fees, that went up 4.7%. Not 2.6%, which is general fund, but you take into account enterprise funds, special revenue funds, the total appropriations went up $15 million, about 4.7%.
Your three minutes are up, do you ever, want to finish with a question?
No, I'll come back with a question.
Well, I just, I don't agree with your numbers, really, but the, the reason for segregating the pensions is that we don't control that. So we're trying to isolate and look at city-controlled costs. I made it pretty clear, we're being hit by 4.4 million, and that's part of the budget, no question about it. And the $29 million pension budget is part of the budget. So when you add those, when you add the pension figures in, yeah, those departments are going up more than the figures that look at what the city can control. Reason Public Works would be down under that scenario is that Public Works is the only group of employees that's not under the state pension system. So their costs didn't go up equivalent to this $4 million. But I, I don't, you know, attorney, Mr. Griffin and I have gone, and the whole budget team has gone over the numbers pretty carefully, and I don't think that some of the numbers you gave were accurate.
They are very accurate, I will look two or three times, I will put on my PC, the computer, I'll be glad to say.
Next, next speaker. Name and address for the record, please.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I'm here, and when I come to the microphone, I'm going to be addressing positions. I understand your budget increase is small, but I really think you have positions in this budget that need to be removed. And in the Legal Department, this Right to Know Coordinator has got to go. It's a $75,000 position that did not produce the results we had wanted. I really feel that there shouldn't have been a dedicated position for Right to Know, and I don't think it's a viable position for you to fund. You are not going to get an attorney in there who's going to come in as a Right to Know Coordinator and stay. The attorney you hired punched out after six months, and it's going to be a rollout ground for anyone. It really is a masqueraded position if you just want to add an attorney. And the time that the attorney was here, we had three lawsuits on Right to Know, largely because of his work. And I can tell you, there's several more that are going to roll in. So I am not a fan of this Right to Know Coordinator legal position. I think what you want to fund is a taxpayer's attorney that's there to serve us, so that when our city wants to go after us with these frivolous lawsuits, we have some means of being funded. So people who can't afford lawyers to come in on a Right to Know request issue, which a standard Right to Know, basic Right to Know, costs a citizen $5,000 to take into court. That's not cheap. So instead of using the system to abuse your citizens, let's roll it the other way. And I think this Right to Know Coordinator should be taken out of the budget, there's $100,000 savings there. Very misguided position, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board of Aldermen and members of the city.
Ms. Johnson, could you just lower the mic a little bit?
I sure can. My name is Paula Johnson, I'm a member of the Board of Education, and I ran this by legal to make sure that I have the right to speak here tonight as a citizen and a taxpayer of this city. So I'm going to speak here and tell you how outrageous I am about what has gone on in this last year. City Hall was taxed, was shut down at taxpayers' expense. Yes, we had a pandemic. I went to work last June in retail with a mask on to make a living, to be able to put a roof over my head and food on the table, although the governor deemed me non-essential. How dare he do that? And how dare you keep the citizens out of City Hall, but you arrest them, but they can't go in there? So I'm proposing right now that the mayor's office loses his staff, because I went there the other day, and I went through City Hall, I took pictures of the renovations. Great job with taxpayers' money, doesn't matter which part it comes from, it came from us, the taxpayers. And you talk about people who haven't worked? That's right, a lot of us lost a job or took decreases in salary rather than increases. I went to your office, Mayor, and I had this little conversation, you invited me to come into City Hall, because I hadn't been there, and I wanted to tell everybody what a beautiful graduation we had in both schools, and I applaud that we were able to get our students graduated this year. I went in there, it's like the Taj Mahal. We have bulletproof glass, and to see the mayor, had to ring the doorbell, had to ring the doorbell. And the renovations to the Board of Aldermen, well, I hope we don't have another pandemic, because there's no social distancing in there now, which it was before. You spent money after dollars after dollars. So here's my proposal, I propose we eliminate the mayor's staff, all of them, and City Hall, because none of them were there during the COVID pandemic, because I asked your secretary, and she told me when I came in on Friday, you weren't there, which I didn't expect, I'm hoping I'd maybe run into you at Whole Foods again. But the question is, they weren't there. I made calls, never got returned calls, many people in the city still talk to me like if I was an Alderman, and they said, nobody called back. So if nobody can call back, then we don't need them, we can eliminate your whole department. There's a big savings right there. And I'm just kind of concerned, and I'm kind of, um...
30 seconds.
What is considered fair price housing? Because when I was on the board the last time, Alderman Willsham sure would tell you that when we had spoke to Waybuild, I asked what was affordable housing, and the difference was like 200 bucks a month. Somebody please define what is affordable housing and what is going to be the housing for downtown? I'll come back again for more questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to respond on City Hall. First of all, the pandemic was real. People in City Hall got the, got the virus, some got very sick. No one died in City Hall, but someone at Public Works did. And if you listen to the medical experts, public health experts, part of the reason to prevent congregation of people in a place like City Hall is not to protect the city employees necessarily, it's to protect the public. We had city employees with COVID-19. And had people been flowing through the building, some of those people would have gotten COVID-19 and might have died. So this was a measure recommended by all public health experts, medical experts, to protect the public and the employees from the, from the virus. And I think it was effective because we did never found a case where, where a member of the public caught it from one of the contagious, one of the positive city employees. Beyond that, all of the city employees worked during the pandemic. You're on the School Department, the teachers worked remotely just because they weren't in the, and your schools were closed. And just because they were closed doesn't mean that people weren't working. In fact, they, many worked harder to try to connect via online and the internet remotely. So I think we did a good job during the pandemic of registering cars, collecting revenue, and delivering city services despite this disruption caused by a real public health
Thank you, next speaker.
Laura Cahoon.
Can you get a little closer to the microphone?
Laura Cahoon. I would like the city to do away with the Economic Development Department. This department is responsible for the submission of part of the bond official statement that goes to Standard and Poor's in order for the city to get their AAA rating. Problem here is the Economic Development Department is basically submitting the same report since 2016, and everybody knows that the city is not the same as it was back in 2016. The report still states that Pennechuck was purchased to reduce rate, but does not mention that this has never happened. Did not mention that Pennechuck has just given a 5.78 increase to their bills. Did not mention that both the solid waste and wastewater budgets went up $8 million in 2022. Did not mention that the Nashville taxpayers will be paying out of their taxes 5.7 million for the shortage of the solid waste funds that is not supported. Did not mention that the sewer rates went up 35%. This report also stated that the city vacancy is 7%. I happened to call the Economic Development Department in early 2020, and they told me they didn't keep this information, but apparently they can still put it in the report. The report also states that the PAC bond is 15.5 million. I guess he didn't get the memo that we got another $5 million. Most importantly, this report mentioned nothing about the commercial property and their submitting abatements. This is not a subject the city likes to bring up. However, these abatements are for 2018 and 19, and the city knew this information when submitting this report, but they made no mention of it. I'm therefore asking the city to eliminate this department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paula Johnson, 15 Westborn Drive. Mayor, when everybody had to wear masks, motor vehicle did not in August on the third floor, because I went up there to register my car. So when we talk about what's fair and equitable, we had, and I keep apologizing for this, that I didn't realize about Executive Order 74. And I'm the member of the Board of Ed that's been fighting to get these kids back in school, to get the masks off these kids in school, to try to get some normalcy back to these kids in school. But Executive Order 74, and I read it that night at the meeting, nothing in this order shall be construed, and I know we're not wearing masks anymore, but this is the point. To prevent municipalities within the state of New Hampshire from enacting their own ordinances related to the wearing of masks or face coverings... ordinances related to the wearing of masks or face coverings that contain stricter provisions than those contained within the order. This order shall not apply to the following. Shall not. We know what shall not means. We write it in every piece of legislation, just about, shall, that word shall. Educated students and staff within K through 12. Any person with a medical condition or disability that prevents wearing masks or, or over the face or covering. It talks here about physical activity. But the bottom line is really the killer. And also, I'm trying to find out from risk management, you have all these barriers downtown, all of them. Where's the handicap parking under ADA? And this really, this last paragraph says, any person who declines to wear a mask or face covering because of a medical or developmental issue or difficulty breathing, shall not, shall not be required to produce documentation which is unlawful, unconstitutional, and so is six feet. Other evidence verifying the condition. So I ask here, when I was in City Hall and we had to wear masks, your employees didn't wear masks up in Motor Vehicle. And you're dictating to the citizens of this city, and most of us had lost their jobs and couldn't afford anything, and you're dictating to us about masks when Executive 74, this order here, said that people who couldn't wear it could wear. And you made your businesses become the nasty ones here. The police. Wrong.
Thirty seconds.
And I'm glad I got thirty seconds less because I'm going to bite my tongue on this one. Thank you.
Name and address.
My name is Dan Richardson, seventy Berkeley Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. First, I want to comment that the mayor made the assertion that there was a lot of public input on the master plan. I'd like to challenge that assertion. I believe that he would be hard-pressed to provide any evidence of that at all. I watched several of those meetings, and I know that there were very few participants online. Moving on to page nine, it's essentially the same graphic that the mayor put on the screen, however, it was hardly legible. Fire, over six years, 27% increase over six years. Twenty-one percent increase for the police. Eighteen percent for school. City Hall, sixteen percent. DPW, fifteen percent. Now, during that time, past six years, essentially, this, this Board of Aldermen has essentially been the same. Essentially the same people. There are a few changes, but these are the people that have been approving these increases. All the while, people have been losing their jobs. People have been actually not looking for jobs anymore because they couldn't, they could not find one. These are people that can't pay their taxes. And yet, over the past six years, we've been kiting the cost of government. I'd like to tell you that local government is not an aristocracy. You don't deserve it. You are public servants. And this Board of Aldermen has been negligent in controlling the costs of city government. And also, it's a mayor's budget. You bear some of that responsibility. Now, we have a correction in the state law which reinstitutes Nashua's spending cap. Thank God. We, we have some means of controlling this, at least limiting the amount, since the Board of Aldermen and City Hall does not seem to have the capability
Thirty seconds.
to limit its, its spending. Thank you.
Now, the reason I say that there was more participation in the master plan is you can get the details and the numbers from Community Development Director Sarah Marshnitz, but we have a thousand people unregistered that have put, put input. It might even be two, but she can give you the exact numbers. But that's why I'm saying that. We did not have that level of participation in the past. People could participate remotely outside the, outside the public meetings.
Next, name and address.
Gary Hoffman, thirty-eight Perrham Street, Unit D. Couple of things I just wanted to point out. First of all, I did participate in the master plan. I was one of those thousand people, and I have to say it was more accessible. I had never actually participated in it, in it before, and I think it's something the city could, should certainly continue. I also want to stick up a little bit for the employees in City Hall. I registered my car recently by appointment. I think that this, it was actually the smoothest it had ever been. I made an appointment online, I got right up there, and it was actually the quickest it had ever, the process had ever been. And I think it might be something the city should really continue. As for this tax increase, I understand it is a steep increase, but we, and I agree, people should be upset and angry about it, but I think we're picking the wrong people to be angry about. I think we should be angry at the state. They're the ones that are choosing to fully fund the pension system at 100% when almost every expert out there says 80% is fine. If they did that, we would be, I believe, last time I checked, we were, the state pension system was close to 70% funded. They did their investments a little bit better, you know, probably even more than that. They are choosing to downshift this cost onto the Nashua taxpayers and every other municipality in the state. So I guess my question, Mayor Donches, is, is there, is the city of Nashua joining with other municipalities in this state to kind of bring this issue forward to the state legislature so they don't keep doing things like this?
The answer is yes. I mean, our delegation, five members of which are on the Board of Aldermen, advanced various bills to try to change the pension situation in various ways. All were unsuccessful, largely on party-line votes. Going back, I should have made it clear that as a result of these actions taken at the local level to cut costs, if, I, I mentioned that despite the 11.8 million dollars imposed by the state, the taxes, if this budget is adopted, we don't project will go up five and a half percent. It will be more, somewhere in the threes probably. More than we'd like. Again, we're, if the state would leave us alone, it would actually go down, but we would, we think we can deliver something in the threes despite the hosing we're taking from the state of New Hampshire.
Lori Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street. I just want to address the economic development position and budget. You know, I, I have a lot of concerns about this position. It seems to me City Hall is run by three individuals, Economic Development, Community Development, and Administrator, Director of Administrative Services. That's our trifecta. That's our brain trust. And honestly, I think it's missing a good bit of the brain side. It's a disappointment to me across the board, and it's because these are appointed positions largely by the mayor. And I'm underwhelmed by these appointments because we seem to pick people who don't have qualifications, and we promote them into positions that they are really overdone on. And the one thing I would say with the economic development position is my interface with this individual is they're very non-responsive to public issues. And as Ms. Cahoon said, they produce reports that are just made-up information that go out to Standard and Poor's, typed in, seven years old, telling us we don't do numbers to get vacancy rates. I've been after vacancy rates for well over a year because it's a legitimate concern for what's going to happen to the tax rate when we run the new assessment next year. What happened in 2020 to these commercial properties is relevant because the model in the, in the run-by vision is being based on 2020 and 2021 sales on commercial properties, two years, and I'm not certain that it's weighted. And if it isn't, then you have to look at what the distribution is going to be and the weight that residential properties are going to carry if there's a shift off of the commercial properties because of what happened in the pandemic. And I haven't been able to get anyone to answer that or speak to the vacancy numbers. I've been told you would. I've been told there'd be a discussion, and there was no discussion. And when I see the Economic Development Director producing reports that are largely false, and when you send a right-to-know in him, to him, you get snubbed, treated rudely, doesn't email it, sends it through some snail mail and mails it back to you, so you've got a 10-day waiting period, he's the only individual I ever knew to do that. I'm not overly supportive of that. And I'm really tired of seeing positions promoted with people who are not qualified. I, I'm underwhelmed by your picks, Mr. Mayor. And you can bet your bippy, I'm not stoked about you picking commissioners.
President Tebow, twenty-four Cheyenne. Oldest figures, Mayor. I have checked, double-checked, they're available in spreadsheets, and I will send you my spreadsheets, and I'll send Mr. Griffin my spreadsheets. I would like to say to the Aldermen, spending is going in the wrong direction. The mayor did an interesting thing. He did the six-year average. Well, I did the six-year average also, the traditional way, taking the budgets over six years ago and comparing with the budgets now, not taking out any amounts for pensions. The police, over six years, had an average of 4.4% a year. They're now at 6.6% this year. Fire had an average of 4.6% over six years. They're now at 9.1%. And the school department had an average of 3.1% over six years, it's 2016, 2022, same years you use, Mr. Mayor. The school went from 3.1% to 3.5%. It's going the wrong direction. Now, everybody keeps talking about pension funds. Well, I started looking at the pension funds. It's true that the state mismanaged over a billion dollars. They mismanaged by a billion dollars a few years ago. They're trying to make that up. They're also trying to get 100% vesting with this madness. If the federal government did 100% vest it, they would owe over 130 trillion dollars. Nobody does 100% vesting, especially the government. It makes no sense. Why the state is insisting on it is beyond me. You have a Nashua delegation, some 30 representatives. You can make a change. You made the change in the spending cap, and back to the state, it said, the state, it's something wrong. They got corrected, it's been corrected. It can be done. You can't keep making excuses and say, oh, taxpayers, we tried, go pay the bill. There's another reason why pensions are so large. I won't mention a name, as you ask, Mr. Chairman, but it's an Alderman. One of the Aldermen, as an example, it's only just an example. This particular Alderman retired in year 2015.
Thirty seconds.
I'll come back if I can't finish this. He got a severance of $65,000, an annual retirement of $94,000. His final salary was $93,000. His annual pay, the first year he retired, was more than his annual salary, $94,000. And guess what? The following year, 2016, he got $121,000.
Time has expired.
I'll be back.
I would just say, I agree with you definitely that the pensions don't need to go to 100%. That things have been mismanaged, you know, so I think our analysis of the pension situation is similar or the same. But our delegation did work hard to change those things. They both tried to, there's a whole nother facet to this we haven't gotten into. The state agreed always to pay 35% of our costs, and they broke that promise a few years ago. That's how they got us into that, this whole system. But there were bills to restore part of the 35%, bills to push off the deadline by which 100% had to be reached, bills to address the so-called assumed rate of return. All those bills were defeated, but our delegation supported all of them. And, you know, we've got 27 members out of 400, but that's it. Those were party-line votes, actually. And I, I, you know, they did their best, but there was a solid majority in the legislature that just said, absolutely not. We're not going to help the cities and towns. Period. And discipline was enforced, and the cities and towns lost out.
Next, name and address.
Christina McKinley, six Southgate Drive. My overarching question really is this. What exactly does "we're all in this together" mean to our city employees? And my comments are to follow. "All in this together" kind of implies, I think, that we're sort of sharing the suffering. But to the best of my knowledge, there's not a single city employee that lost any money over the last two years. There was no salary reduction. People weren't let go. None of those things happened to anyone in the city. So exactly what was the shared suffering? And if we're now looking at what is now no longer a state-funded pension, what percentage of the people who have been for decades paying for city employees' pensions, what percentage of those people have pensions themselves? So we're continuing to ask city residents to make sacrifices beyond what they have for their own coverage, be it healthcare or pensions. And I again ask, where is the shared suffering? Where is the "we're in this together"? It would seem reasonable to me at this juncture, given that we are now responsible for those pensions, that city employees, to cover their own pensions, it's not my pension, their own pensions, that they take, they take salary cuts over the next decade in order to cover their long-term benefits. It should not be left up to citizens who don't have those pensions. It should be, be covered by the people who are going to benefit. And that is certainly not most of the citizens in our city. I spoke with John Griffin on March 25th, had a wonderful conversation, quite a lengthy one, and it's my understanding
Thirty seconds.
that in September, you look at surplus relief and that you have an opportunity to make changes. I hope you will, and I hope you will consider what I've just said.
Thank you.
Daniel Richardson, seventy Berkeley Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. Getting back to page nine, which shows the exorbitant increases over the past six years, it's a slap in the face to the citizens of New Hampshire, of Nashua. I've known that for a long time, but I'm glad that you put that in the budget book. So everybody who wants to can look at page nine of the budget book. It's online, too, to see what has been happening to wages and costs of the different departments in the city. It's outrageous. Given that, I would still like to know just the same about human service agencies. In here, it shows the funding from last year for a number of human service agencies in Nashua.
That's not part of this division.
It's not.
No.
I will save it.
Thank you.
Paula Johnson, fifteen Westborne Drive. I just got to bring something up here. Listening to this whole thing about insurance and pensions, Alderman Wiltshire can attend basically with me when we had meetings with then, back then, Mayor Streeta and probably Attorney Bolton back then, when we were talking about the rising costs of healthcare. This was back when I was on the board. I got on the board in 2002, when I stepped down from the Board of Education to become an Alderman. And so we're talking about the same things we talked about in 2002, 2003, 2004, and 2005, about the rising costs of healthcare. of health care. And we have, at this point in time, twenty-twenty-one, we're still talking about the rising costs of health care, because we, the public, always paid for employees' health care, and they always had better health care than we, the taxpayers, do. They're just now getting the high deductibles, which my husband and I had for years and years and years prior, too. And also, what we talked about back then was not just the health care. When I stepped down from the board at the end of two thousand and five, when I chose not to run again, I came into the chamber, and I don't know if Mrs. Lovering might remember, but you probably can find the minutes buried somewhere, I came in and talked about that the baby boomers like I am, although I don't like to admit it sometimes, but I am a baby boomer, when the pensions had to be paid, the local, state, and federal were not going to have enough money to pay our baby boomers, because the money was mismanaged and not funded correctly. Isn't this what we're hearing right now, about mismanagement from the state or whatever? Whoever mismanaged it, why don't these people ever be held accountable? And we, the people, remember, it's always we, the people, we, the taxpayers, whatever level, because we pay taxes to the federal government, they bring it back here, and then we still pay more taxes locally, but we pay taxes. We, the people, literally get screwed in the city on these taxes. So we, it wasn't funded properly, and it wasn't always a Republican-held House between now and when all this managed, mismanaged, because I remember, Mayor, I had that conversation with you, then in two thousand five, two thousand six, it was two prominent representatives that asked me to run
Thirty seconds.
For the State House, and I was at the State House as a Democrat, on that side of the aisle. And so, it wasn't always, and that's when the Democrats held the House. So it wasn't always just the Republicans. So where has the Democrats done to correct this when they held the House? Thank you.
Well, I certainly agree that those responsible should bear the burden, but you need to tell the majority in the legislature that now, because that's a hard sell, apparently, uh, and they haven't been able, they haven't been willing to take responsibility. These pensions are a matter of state law. You know, we can't change them. They dictate all of the details, how much we pay, what the rates are, um, it's all, it's all, all the details are determined at the state level. There are various things they could do to help us, but they've chosen not to do that. I agree with Mr. T. Boom that there's no need to go to a hundred percent, especially for the government, we could explain why, but, uh, you know, even at current levels, they're never going to run out of money. So, um, we're paying tens, hundreds of millions, really, into the state that probably aren't necessary.
We're still in general government?
Lori Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street. Does general government include the city clerk's office?
Yes.
Okay, um, I guess I, I I guess I have a question then. I'm wondering why we were unable to hire a city clerk that had experience being a clerk. This is a big issue for me, and it's not personal, but I don't understand a city of ninety thousand placing somebody in the clerk's position that had no experience. And we are paying to certify this individual in their sixties, so for the next four years, they can work on their certification to become a clerk and then retire. It makes no sense at all, and it's a huge deficit. I had problems at that office as well. And it just seems to me we could have recruited somebody and gone out and actually hired and not made this an appointment of yours that is just picking from somebody within. It's not fair to the citizens when we don't look for the most experienced people to come in here and do the jobs that need to be done. Thank you.
Well, I don't really agree with that. Um, first of all, the city clerk did a fantastic job during the most difficult election year there's ever been. And at least, I guess we disagree about the approach which should be taken, but, uh, I think it's best to appoint someone that you know, that you know can do the job, that has ability, intelligence, will work hard, and to the extent they don't know the job, will learn it. As an example, we had a former deputy city clerk who had clerk experience, but she ended up leaving or being let go because she couldn't do the job. So, at least in my judgment, intelligence, willingness to work hard, diligence, um, and, uh, you know, a strong work ethic are the most important things, and the current city clerk had been around City Hall for a long, long time, and understood, uh, well how to run the, the, the elections and all of the other functions of the city clerk's office. And again, I go back to the beginning. There has never been a more difficult election that was held in two thousand twenty with all of those absentee ballots, and all of the state red tape regarding each ballot, keeping track of each ballot at every stage, and the city clerk and her staff did, did an excellent job. So to, if you're criticizing what they did in that election, I definitely, um, disagree with you.
I'd like to wrap this up to the next two speakers, and then we'll move on to another division.
Christina McKinley, Sixth South Gate Drive. Just a question about the numbers, the actual numbers. I don't, I don't know who is correct. I don't know whether he is, whether you are. What I do know is that I spent some time trying to calculate things, and my recommendation for a budget that's meant, to be clear, to citizens who are not spending all day working on the budget, would be to include what the actual percentage change is, a column that tells me, this is what the percentage change is exactly. That way, I'm not trying to figure out based on what the original budget was, what the mayor proposed budget is, because frankly, my numbers don't, what I calculated doesn't match up with what you just told us. So I'm willing to guess that I'm perhaps wrong. But because of that, I'm asking that a column for next year with a percentage change be included, that makes it clear. And if that were the case, and if my, my, my numbers are correct, um, there, there are some of these numbers that are so astonishing how much the increases have been, that I'm sort of sick, uh, it just makes me ill. So I'm hopeful I'm wrong, but it would be clearer if you had that percentage right in the book. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Maybe I could respond. John Griffin, Chief Financial Officer. There's no question a two-hundred-and-ninety-million-dollar budget is complex and, um, difficult to understand. We try to demystify that as best we can. We have tried in the past, uh, some of you may remember, we put percentage increases on the right-hand side, and to the extent that in any given year, there's collective bargaining agreements or contingency for negotiation, it tends to make that calculation difficult. Be more than happy to further discuss, but we, we found that putting increases and decreases, even on line items, where there's a collective bargaining agreement that might have been not settled over two or three years, very difficult. So as an example, those, those unions that have not settled their contracts for fiscal twenty-two, those monies are not in the departments in which they work, they're in contingency for negotiation. That in and of itself makes it difficult, but when I arrived a few years ago, the logic was, which is interesting, we don't really want to let the, the, the various unions know how much we put aside, the reality is, you can figure it out. But we do move the contingency for negotiation down in contingency, and it takes legislative action by the Board of Aldermen to move it into the departments in which those employees work. So that alone would tend to skew the numbers. So what I try to do, uh, under the mayor's direction, is at the Budget Review Committee meetings, and we'll have one next week with the recap, is to make sure everyone understands the increases and decreases. Page nine and ten was, um, an effort that I put forth, trying to isolate on things that could be controlled by the city, but most importantly, things that aren't controlled by the city, which is the pension discussion we have. So that's why it's, it is a difficult budget to, to look at, but, uh, we, we try to make sure, and all of my colleagues try to make sure when they're before the Budget Review Committee, they answer every and all questions that they can. So I just wanted to share that with the group. Thank you.
Okay, Fred T. Boom, I have no difficulty reading the budget. I read it like a book, but it's taken me five years to learn to, to do it. Here's an additional percentage number, ladies that want to know percentages. The pension fund, look at the six-year average, Mayor, same six years you looked at.
Excuse me, the what? There's an echo, I can't always hear what you're saying, the what funds?
The, the six-year average
Okay.
For the pensions, the increase is seven-point-nine percent. It is now twenty-three-point-five percent this year alone. We mentioned a billion-dollar mismanagement and the vesting, but here's another way to really look at it. It's the alderman, I won't name, two thousand fifteen, retired with sixty-five thousand dollars in severance, and ninety-four thousand dollars in annual retirement. The following year, his annual retirement went up to one-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars, because there was retroactive pay that hadn't been paid yet. And today, this alderman makes a hundred-and-tw- eleven thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-four dollars, one-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars a year. In addition, this alderman gets seven thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars in tax-free medical subsidy, paid directly to the city of Nashua. So the total retirement cost this year is one-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, two-hundred dollars. Compare that with social security, you see how really bad it is? The average social security recipient, or all beneficiaries, is eighteen thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy dollars a year, eighteen thousand. The average age sixty-five, somebody who ties to social security, this year, twenty-twenty-one, fifteen thousand, five-eighty-two dollars, fifty thousand, eight-fifty-two dollars. Compare that with the one-nineteen thousand I just mentioned. If you want to know the maximum social security, the absolute maximum you can make, that's, you've got enormous earnings.
Thirty seconds.
It's twenty-seven thousand, eight-thousand dollars at eight-sixty-two, or forty-six thousand, seven-hundred dollars if you retire at age seven. This alderman was a lot younger than age seven, making now one-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars. That is the problem. You can't just sit there and say, well, we can help it, it's the other guys. That's your job, to fix it, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how you do it. You fix a spending cap, if you can fix a spending cap, you can fix this problem. Thank you.
There is a lot of focus on pensions, for good reason, but I wanted to state the converse before we leave, leave, leave the subject. This issue doesn't have to do with the employees. I already said that eighty percent of the money is going to build the assets, which means only twenty percent of the money we're contributing, year by year, is necessary to cover pensions for the current employees, twenty percent. So if all we're, if we did not have to deal with the state's mess, the pension bill would not be twenty, twenty-nine million, it would be about five or six million. But the, the, all, you know, the eighty percent, the twenty-four million is going to build up the assets, which Mr. T. Boom and I agree, isn't really even necessary, but that's what they want to do. We don't have a choice, this is a state law, and until the legislature changes it, and yes, um, this time, it was certainly a party-line vote, but, you know, ten years ago, or whatever, uh, uh, you know, it's been, it's been a problem created by, ten years ago, both parties in the legislature. So, you know, but the, the fix, uh, this time, you know, it was clearly, uh, uh, you know, party-line issue, as it was last time. Um, so, again, this doesn't have to do with the current employees. If we could just pay for the current employees, your taxes would go down over ten percent, over ten percent of your money, every year, is going to build up the assets of the state pension system, based upon, first, the mismanagement, and then the dictates of the state pension system and the state legislature, that, uh, the asset should be increased above seven-and-a-half billion dollars. And I'll repeat it a third time, this has not, this, the problem is not the current employees, it's the mismanagement of the state system, the, uh, dogmatic approach taken by the pension system and the legislature in requiring that these assets, that, that hundreds, the billions of dollars be added to the assets, even though Mr. T. Boom and I and a lot of others, Brian McCarthy, the late, also, same thing, there's no need to do this. But, you know, until a, a majority in the legislature decides otherwise, this is the system we're stuck with.
Excuse me, can't, no comments. Excuse me. Excuse me. You cannot make comments from the audience. Next, we'll go to Administrative Services Division, Department one-oh-six Administrative Services, Department one-ten Arlington Street Community Center, Department one-eleven Human Resources, Department one-thirteen Benefits, Department one-twenty Telecommunications, one-twenty-two Information Technology, one-twenty-eight Risk Management, one-twenty-nine City Buildings, one-thirty Purchasing, one-thirty-two Assessing, and one-thirty-four G.I.S.
Lori Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street. Let's start with the Administrative Services position. I'm all for removing that office. I've seen a lot of what it's done, and its run costs up very high on this city. I had the pleasure of spending seven hours with the director on Friday, gathering information about how business is done in the city, and I have to tell you, I was disgusted and underwhelmed. If you all recall this picture that ran in the newspaper a while ago, when I was working on assessing issues, it's a picture of the director and her staff with thousands of property record files out on a photo, with the mayor saying that I was retaliating against the city by doing my research, and that it was costing us a hundred thousand dollars. I then learned in a budget committee meeting, when Ms. Willshire showed a great deal of sympathy to the director, because we had to hire a fifty-thousand-dollar, um, um, contract to get permits addressed, because this citizen was taking so much time of the assessors. I learned on Friday that what happened here with the director, Ms. Kleiner, in these boxes, is she ordered anything that I requested to see be placed in a special office, and ordered the assessors to research what I was looking at without ever knowing what I was looking at. In other words, go figure out what she thinks she's looking at and report back to me. And that was very difficult for them, because they had no idea what I was looking for, to the tune of probably spending well over half a million dollars. That's absurd, that kind of tracking of a citizen. It's absolutely absurd. And that's what we called retaliation from a citizen. I call it retaliation of my government. She was completely unqualified for this position, another special assistant to the mayor that got promoted to Department Head of six departments, including becoming an acting chief, essentially. This department should be eliminated, and we should go back to the individual departments we have. This is wrong, and I will be addressing, assessing, G.I.S., and a couple others. Thank you.
Well, I disagree with the analysis regarding what's, what's happened. First of all, uh, we have attracted one of the most qualified assessors, uh, chief assessors in the state of New Hampshire, and if he's allowed to do his job, uh, he'll do a very good job on behalf of the citizens of Nashua. Secondly, the Administrative Services Director has made a lot of reforms and saved a lot of the taxpayer, the taxpayers a lot of money, in I.T., uh, in other areas, in assessing, there's many more records on, on There's many more records on the internet that can be obtained now, many, many more than could ever in the past. So, a lot of changes and reforms have been made, services to the citizens have been improved, and I don't, I think most people would agree with that.
Next.
Dan Richardson, 70 Berkeley Street. Is this thing working?
Yes.
What's that? Hello?
Yes.
Okay. So, is 109 part of the discussion? Department 109?
No, that's Civic and Community Activities.
Yeah?
That was the previous one.
That was the previous one? You told me it was, I had to wait.
I wasn't quite sure, go ahead, you can ask your question on that one, but...
All right. So, human service agencies. So I was looking through here at the number of human service agencies that are funded by the city. The city gives them a certain amount, so, community care, I guess. And it's a good thing, it's a good thing we do that. We had a lot of, a lot of needs in the city, and it's good for the city to share of its annual budget. But I'm going through here, and I'm looking at, this year, the Girl Scouts of Green and White Mountains were cut out, they were zeroed out. And, you know, I do want to know why they were zeroed out. What did they do that was wrong, that would cause them to be zeroed out? They, and also the Salvation Army got zeroed out. So why would that happen in favor of adding in other agencies that have not been there before? Caregivers. I don't know who they are, I have no association with them, no familiarity, but why were these very good agencies cut out of the city, providing a certain amount of, a certain level of funding to them? Girl Scouts is a very good organization, and so is the Salvation Army, and there's a few others in there, but in particular, I pick on the girls.
Well, the process that is used is that there is a Citizens Advisory Council, which meets with all these agencies and makes these recommendations. I mean, there is no input by me as the mayor, or from the alderman. The Citizens Advisory Council, which I think is, well, it's a small, it's become a group of citizens headed by a guy who's very dedicated, and they all are, they meet with all the agencies, or at least they take, they take applications from all the agencies, and they make recommendations to the city, based upon what they see as the needs, based on the presentations made by the various agencies. Now, those amounts go up and down. Sometimes somebody gets a lot more than they did before, or sometimes they get less. But it has not been my habit, nor the habit of the aldermen, to question these recommendations, because we're trying to make it non-political. I mean, the way this got started, believe it or not, when I was mayor before, we put this thing into, this system into effect. And the point is, so that it's not, you know, the, who knows the mayor, or who knows the alderman, or whatever, it's based upon, and certainly reasonable people can disagree as to the best allocation, but, and certainly, you know, maybe, maybe you're right, maybe the money should have gone somewhere else than what it did, but this is a group of citizens, volunteers, who are giving their best effort to try to come up with a series of recommendations that meets the needs of the community, and responds to the applications and the presentations made by these various agencies. So it's not political, it's not the alderman, it's not the mayor, it's a group of citizens who make these recommendations. And we generally just follow them and enact them. I don't necessarily agree with everything that they've suggested, but I don't change it, because the idea is, that's, you know, we want to let the citizens decide and not inject any kind of special influence, you know? I didn't change, I haven't changed anything for the years that I've been mayor, just, even though maybe I didn't agree with some of it. But I don't know, they're the ones that listen to the presentations. Anyway, that's, so they do their best, and we try to follow their recommendations.
Next.
Beth Skare, 111 East Tobart Street. Last year, Mayor, I called in to your virtual budget hearing, and you said that you cut everything to the bone, and then I asked about the Arlington Street Community Center, which was closed at the time, and you said it was absolutely necessary. Well, it's still closed, it's going to be closed for 18 months, according to your budget, and the director, Megan, I won't say her name, sorry, is getting paid, in your budget, $84,000, $84,152. And what is she doing? She's providing virtual programming, the internet is flush with virtual programming for kids, we don't need to pay anyone to provide that, she's making some kits, that's nice, but that's a lot of money, $84,000. The Emergency Management Director, who I assume must have really been straight out this year, gets $95,000. The Chief Public Health Nurse, $95,000. The wastewater project engineer, $85,000. Plant Operations Supervisor, $83,000. Fire Training Officer, $90,000. Fire Mechanic, $78,000. And she's working from home, making virtual programs for kids. Meanwhile, her, she's serving Crown Hill, those kids need programming, their parents were at home with them because, you know, school wasn't in session, because, you know, everyone was virtual. A lot of, the Boys and Girls Club was taking these kids in, the Arlington Street Community Center could have taken them in, but it's still closed. This is a huge waste of money. It wasn't, it shouldn't have been in the budget last year, it shouldn't be in the budget this year. I filed a Right to Know request to get all the details, and I'm still waiting for that, you know, her emails, her reports, because there's just, it's hard to know even what she has been doing. And, Mayor, I'd ask you to find out what she's been doing, and why, and how she earned this salary, I don't think it was deserved. Thank you.
Well, certainly, we agree that the Crown Hill neighborhood, traditional neighborhood in Nashville, is a neighborhood that has a number of families who are in economic distress and needs support. And we opened the Arlington Street Community Center to help them. Now, the salary is not $84,000, the salary is actually $58,000. But, like the schools, most of the service has been from, you know, online. But those services are still helpful to the children involved. And just as a testament, you know, to some of what has been accomplished, the director of the Arlington Street Community Center has been working with a lot of the families at the housing at Marshall Street and East Hollis, which is, you know, workforce, affordable housing. And they were so appreciative of all of the effort and help that the center and the director had given to their tenants, that they donated a, you know, a basketball court to the city, paid for completely by them, in back of the Arlington Street Community Center. So I think there's, I mean, we just, the idea that nothing is happening because it's online during the pandemic, you know, I don't think is correct.
Paula Johnson, again, I'm still here in Nashville. I want to go back to the general government account, because I thought you said that you couldn't do that before, because I had a question on that. And my question is, Great American Downtown, that used to be $40,000, now it's $50,000. What exactly is Great American Downtown doing with that $50,000? Is anybody going to answer?
Well, they're supporting our efforts to create activity and expand the tax base downtown. Now, please keep in mind that the downtown is a profit center, so-called, for the city. The quarter-mile square, quarter, the city is 31 square miles. One quarter of that, one quarter mile, so less than 1% is the central business district, Main Street, and the Mill Yard, Mill Yard area. That area of the city generates $6 million in tax revenue. That's far more than the services that are generated downtown. Oh, wait. There's virtually no students, a few students, but not very many. No garbage collection, it's all commercial. So there's, you know, plowing, police, and fire. So if we, through creating new activity downtown, can bring more people down there, can make people enjoy it more, can increase the strength of those small businesses, and grow the property tax base, maybe the 6 million will become 8, or 10, or 12. And we can pay for schools in your neighborhood, or police, or fire, or whatever it is, using the money that's generated there. So keep in mind that that, that area generates a lot of money that helps pay for services throughout every neighborhood.
It sounds good for paying schools in my neighborhood. I live in Ward 5, but my kids went to school in Ward 4, so which one was my neighborhood? Where I lived, or where my kids went to school? So, I mean, six in one, half a dozen of the other, but anyway, let that be.
Your time was up, you asked a single question, you got an answer?
Okay, I'll get back in line, that's okay.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Onward to the assessing budget. Mr. Mayor, I think you really misrepresented the improvements that have gone on in assessing. It's been an enormously painful process, and you don't understand what citizens are trying to get at with information when you look at the improvements that were made by the director. Property record cards that were ordinarily available to the public in November did not become available until the end of January. I had to send emails into a chief to request probably over 200 property record cards for him to email them to me, because I had no access to help with abatements. It was absurd, and frustrating, and any email to the director to say, when are these property record cards coming online, were three months late, there was no answer, nobody could figure it out. The software update, which was supposed to take a few months, took 16 months, and we had a lot of trouble with the software. There were a lot of errors and things that didn't work well. We instituted a new policy in there where records aren't open, despite our charter saying that we can come to City Hall and inspect records that are readily available. The director put a five-day Right to Know standing on open records, so you couldn't go in and look at a property record file anymore, and I believe that remains. I think that's actually illegal, and that may be something I go to court on. It's ridiculous, you took it away. So when you say there's tremendous improvements down there, I think it's been hair-pulling. Have you looked at the new computer systems that are up down there, the two at the cubicles? The software is so complex that I don't think any citizen's going to ever figure out how to print a property record card. I'm going to have to spend five or six hours figuring out the menus myself. It's not simple, no instructions at the counter. Have you looked at how the office space is set up for citizens? You took 45 square feet of countertop that the public could come in and use, and reduced it to about six. Where does the public put their papers, their notebooks, their drawings, their information they want to share with an assessor? You took it all away. You took away the research space, so people like me could never go back in. You didn't leave a computer in an open area where a citizen like me could research, away from the cubicles. You reduced the computers from three to two. I am not happy with what you did in there, and I don't think you made it better, or easier, or simpler for property owners. I think it was a disaster. And next, I'll come back on IT.
Laura Cahoon, 30 Greenwood Drive. I'm speaking up against the assessing budget.
Could you get close to the microphone, I don't think we can hear you.
As close as I can. The assessing department is currently hiring a commercial appraiser for $150,000 to do commercial appraisals. Sad part is, the mayor and the other city officials are trying to hide this expense from the public by putting this expense against an asset account. In 2011, there was an account that residents could see, to see how much money was being returned on abatements, however, the city no longer shows that item. Both the mayor and the assessing department knew that they needed a commercial appraiser before the budget was finished, however, they chose not to include it in the budget. Just like the city is not telling the residents that the city has already returned over $3.3 million to commercial property owners, and that does not include interest. It also has brought down the commercial property assessments by over $65 million. Nashville residents must realize that what the commercial properties do not pay in property taxes, the residential property taxes must pick up the tab. The city needs to be upfront with the residents, and therefore, the additional $150,000 should be charged to assessing. If the city wants to change the budget to simply eliminate maybe the 150 that's going to downtown improvements, and the $50,000 going to Great American Downtown, that would keep the budget flat. Thank you.
Wait, ready for me? Yeah. Beth Skare, 111 East Tobart Street. So, again, the director of the Arlington Street Community Center was out for 18 months, that, and her, and you're correct, Mayor, the salary is 58488, plus her, you know, benefits comes to about eight, over 80,000, and she is going to be out for 18 months. All the other city employees were called back to their positions, she wasn't. I don't understand. The kids, this is like a schoolteacher not teaching her kids. I mean, the kid, these schoolteachers worked insane hours, teaching virtual classes, and later in-person, combined with virtual, and here she's at the center, putting together kits, and putting on videos. I, when you say you cut the budget to the bone, this is just one example, and I'm sure there, I'm guessing if people comb through this, they could find a lot of other ones, but this is just really ridiculous. And I don't understand, you know, you said you hired your friends, and then you were telling Mr. Richardson that you didn't want to, to have your influence over the donations to the human services organizations. Well, I think your influence, your friends, shouldn't be involved in any of these decisions. These should be made based on what's good for the city, and I don't think this is good for the kids of Crown Hill to have the center closed for 18 months. It was created for a reason, and it's not fulfilling that reason. Thank you.
Paula Johnson, Nashville, New Hampshire. Risk management. I've got a concern, and this has to do with the downtown, with those, the eating out, the dining out on Main Street. I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem is that you've eliminated, again, I'm going to talk about it, you eliminated the handicap parking. And I've gone back and forth with legal, and risk management said I had a chance to walk Main Street this afternoon. There is currently one handicap space in front of Persian Gallery, Rug Gallery, and one almost directly across the street in front of St. Patrick Catholic Church. The only other space posted was in front of San Francisco Kitchen, which there was more on the other side, because I've got a handicap plate, so I know where I would park on Main Street, and when I would go down to Wing Gates and other places. Currently blocked, which is currently blocked by Jersey barriers. There are very, there very well may have been more spaces located near ongoing construction, PAC, I believe there was down there, the Performing Arts Center, isn't that the same building that was a non-binding referendum on the ballot? And somehow, we, the people, are going to pay for this. Although I was unable to access this area during my walk, last year, I remember there being concern regarding transition and accessibility from the sidewalk to the extended dining area, which was rectified with the use of portable ramps, allowing for a smooth transition to the street. Again, handicapped, I know in parking lots, it's one put 25, two put 53, because when I was an alderman, that $250... because when I was an alderman, that two hundred and fifty-dollar fine, if you park in a handicapped spot and you don't have the placard, or you don't have a plate, I did that. To help the people who have a disability, because some people are just lazy, and they would just park there. I attached last year's downtown dining revision, which I don't care about. Um, I am unaware the amount of spots that needed to be provided versus what is available for the on-street parking. Given the current expansion of, for outdoor dining and ongoing construction, construction, I have reached out to eight, my ADA contact with the state to obtain some clarification on numbers of specific requirements, given our current circumstances. Once I have the information, I'll update you, and this was June fifteenth.
Thirty seconds.
I complained about it before, and I think all of you, as aldermen, should really take a look at making sure that your constituents who have a walking disability are able to be able to park downtown and visit downtown. If you want to build it, then you have to give the parking for the people who are disabled. Thank you.
Well, we will check that. Now, my understanding is we have the same number of handicap spaces as we did before, but, um, we will check that, and if it's not correct, uh, you're right, we should have enough.
Lori Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street. I want to address a, a reduction in the assessing budget. I believe all of the commercial activities and, and, uh, business should be subcontracted out. We continue to have some really big issues in our commercial side, and you know that there is an assessor over there that underperforms consistently. And I've grown really tired of it. We're in abatement season, we have abatements, we're gonna hit the deemed denied date on June thirtieth, and this assessor, once again, has not delivered a single abatement to the table. I had two property owners email me this week that told me he was on vacation. It is absurd. Why are our commercial assessors not able to handle the mom-and-pop businesses and get us through them in four months? We do not have the horsepower on the commercial side to handle this aspect of our city business. And we're probably paying three or four hundred grand into that. I really think you should look at subcontracting out the commercial side and getting people who really know what they're doing with that part of the business. Secondly, that assessing office should have had a lot of furloughed workers during COVID. They could not do inspections, they were not doing permits, and they were not doing their work. And we kept them on with full salaries despite that. That was not fair to the taxpayers. It, that is not a group, it's not like Public Works that had to go out there and do the job. Assessing did not, and they did not do the job. And we paid full boat for that. If I have time, IT, you really need to just, uh, restore your IT, um, director. I am very concerned that you fired the IT director, and you're leaving the position blank. The city is too large and has too much stuff going on in the digital world to not have a director. You're doing all these digital upgrades. You know, you have a big email problem. And I just filed a lawsuit yesterday, pro se, over emails. I would way prefer not to do that. I would love to have a discussion with the city about what's going on with emails, but I can't. The only way you can do it is through a lawsuit. I asked for two months of emails, January and February, for assess help. I didn't really get Januaries. I asked in March. Took twenty-five days for you to recognize the right-to-know, and then you failed to deliver January's records. What are you doing with the emails? Why are they all missing?
Thirty seconds.
Those are official documents for the furtherance of city business. And in there were my emails with the abatement applications that I had done for senior citizens, that I came to City Hall on the twenty-second, on the seventeenth, the twenty-second to get stamped, and ended up twenty-eight days later arrested. You didn't get my email on the seventeenth, you didn't get my email on the twentieth, they weren't in there, and apparently, you didn't get my phone call. What's going on with our data?
Time has expired.
Thank you.
Last question on this division.
Dan Richardson, seventy Berkeley Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. Uh, I'm not sure where it occurs in this book, so you might help me with it. Uh, what I'm looking for is the financial payments that we're estimating for lawsuits, uh, this coming year, fiscal twenty-two. We have to provide for that, so, uh, if you'd be kind enough to tell me where in the budget book, under what department, uh, that I'd find that, uh, that number.
Legal Department.
That'd be under the Legal Department? That would be on page what?
It, Mr. Griffin, that's actually, was in the previous section, the Legal Department. I'm not sure they're filed there anyway.
Page sixty-three, someone said?
Page fifty-eight.
Corporation Counsel is gonna answer the question.
I'd be interested in the amount. Uh, hopefully it shows that.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not, Steve Bolton, I'm the Corporation Counsel for the city, uh, essentially city attorney, and, uh, I'm the senior person in the Legal Department. Uh, it, I'm not sure I fully understand the question. Uh, most of the lawsuits we handle, uh, with the lawyers who are on staff, uh, so there's no, in most cases, there's no outside legal fees that we're paying to deal with the situation when the city gets sued. Now, in what I hope is the very unlikely event, that there's a judgment against the city, it would depend on the circumstances, what the alleged, uh, wrongdoing is on the part of the city where the, uh, judgment would be paid. So, for example, if, uh, a paving contractor, uh, who we hire to do the twenty-five or so miles of paving of streets, uh, each year, if one of those contractors were to say that, okay, the contract called for payment of a hundred dollars per mile, uh, for certain quantities, and there was a dispute over whether that contractor had provided ten miles of, uh, paving, or fifteen miles of paving, uh, when that dispute got resolved, the, uh, payment would come out of the paving account. So somewhere in the Public Works budget, or in a special bond proceeds account where the money for the paving program was held. Other types of, uh, judgments against the city would come out of other accounts. So a tax abatement appeal that results in a refund of taxes paid to a taxpayer would come out of what's called the overlay. And that's money in addition to the budget that is added into the amount to be raised in taxes for this express purpose of paying the expenses of dealing with tax abatement appeals and any refunds that are ordered or agreed to in a settlement. Uh, as I say, different types of litigation can be, judgments can be funded from different sources, depending on what the nature of the case is.
So, so, okay, I think I understand what you're saying. You're saying for whatever department that it's associated with, that money will be coming out of that department for payment of, of, uh, judgment from a lawsuit?
There are all sorts of, of situations, but to be overly simplified, yes, it would be the department involved.
Is there anywhere in this book where it shows the, the summation of the proceeds from lawsuits?
When you say proceeds, you mean where we have sued someone and gotten money from them?
No, it's where the city's had to pay.
Yeah, I would not refer to that as a proceed. Um, so I'm not really sure I understand. I don't believe there's any one place where you would find that.
Mr. Griffin?
John Griffin, CFO, there is not one place in a budget book. There's obviously contracts, bonded indebtedness, risk management, claims.
Do we, do we make any preparation in a budget book, in a budget for any suits? Is that something that can be foreseen and then budgeted?
The overlay account is a good example of that. The whole function of the overlay account is to pay for refunds and expenses of litigation concerning tax abatement appeals. So in the case of the overlay, uh, we take a look at the pending abatements in any given year, what the trend has been for the prior years, how many remain pending, what the volume of those are, the total volume. Uh, so, for example, a few years ago, we had, uh, several years backed up on, uh, public service of New Hampshire's abatement appeal. And, uh, the total exposure there was just over three million dollars. Not the difference in the assessment, what they were claiming they were owed in refunds. Uh, we had some concern about that, and we were trying to provide for that in overlay. Uh, if it turned out that, uh, we had to pay more, there's a state statute about how that gets added into the budget, and has to be appropriated in order to satisfy judgments. Happily, in the case of the, uh, public service company's appeal, we were a hundred percent victorious, and, uh, ended up refunding a total of zero dollars. Uh, that doesn't always happen. We're, uh, happy and satisfied when that does happen.
Okay. Thank you for answering the question.
Yeah, I wanted to wrap this area up, because it's nine o'clock, wanna move on, we got a lot of divisions left. If you have short questions?
Not a short question, just a comment. Um, Gloria Timmison, three Rodean Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire. Um, I would like to state that we should keep the director of the Arlington Street Community Center. Um, the fact that it's been closed is inaccurate. Um, we just, a couple of weeks, opened the Arlington Street Community Center on the Memorial Day weekend with the director there. We had a hundred and fifty thousand boxes of food that would distribute from the Arlington Street Community Center, as well as a lot of other programs. So to say that the director is, and, um, is useless, or we don't need it, that's simply not true. Anything that you want to talk about, or know about the Arlington Street Community Center, you can get that information from the director, as well as she is open for every single Nashua citizen, inaccessible as well. And I know that for a fact, because we use it for many, many things. So that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. This'll be the last one, and Administrative Services.
Beth Skare, one-eleven East Hobart Street. I'm, I'm asking about IT. Um, there was a, a phishing attack where an employee of the city sent tens of thousands of dollars to a scammer, and I was wondering what the outcome of that was, and what we're doing to prevent it, because I'm worried about the city's cybersecurity measures.
Thank you. We're going to now move on to Financial Services Division, Department one-twenty-six, Financial Financial Services is the next division. I didn't hear your question.
You want me to repeat it?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. It's, um, of, a scammer, um, convinced a city employee to send him tens of thousands of dollars on a contract. And I'm wondering what's the city's doing to protect our cybersecurity, the IT department? The mayor ga- reported this in a, in, uh, one of his speeches, and we never heard the outcome of that.
Well, there is no outcome yet. We haven't paid the money. Um, the hacking actually occurred on the, the vendor. The, the, someone hacked into the vendor and, and, um, meaning not us, but the other party of the contract, and posed as the, as the vendor. Um, and there's not been a resolution in the sense that I don't think we've, we've paid the vendor for that money, uh, and there's just ongoing discussions about the problem. But the, again, the hacking didn't occur into the city system. And we could get Ms. Kleiner to talk about all of the, uh, IT security that there is. But again, the, the hacking, the penetration was not of the city system, it was of the vendor system. And, uh, the crook, or hacker, posed as the vendor.
Yeah, and the, and the city employee fell for the ruse. That was created by the vendor system being hacked.
All right, Financial Services Division?
Lori Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street. Um, CFO Griffin, I think you have some terrific people in your office. Um, I'm particularly appreciative of Rosemary. Uh, when I went to her, she was always very, um, forthright in addressing my issues and getting me answers very quickly, and it's very appreciated. And I look forward to having that opportunity to work with her again, as soon as some of you upper people lighten up and let us citizens have that access. Thank you.
Uh, Dan Richardson, seventy Berkeley Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. It shows, uh, wages in the mayor's proposed budget of one, basically one and a half million dollars for the Financial Services, uh, Department. Uh, I'm not sure if that's the complete department, so, Mr. Griffin, I'd like to ask you, uh, for that particular account, full-time, how many people does that represent? That one and a half million dollars of wages?
Um, John Griffin, CFO, if we look at page one-hundred and thirty-four, we list the position distribution, which in fiscal twenty-two is gonna be twenty-three point six individuals charged to the general fund portion of the Financial Services budget.
Twenty-three people?
Twenty-three point six. There's fractions of people, some, some of the team are, um, charged to other areas.
So you're saying twenty-three people, uh, eat, from, are, are paid by that one and a half million dollars?
That is correct.
Didn't expect that. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else on Financial Services?
Mr. Tebohm. So, Mr. Griffin?
Yeah?
We used to see in the budget book, either in the budget book or attached with a little booklet, the breakdown of the salaries, that category. It would give a director, a social director, number of lieutenants, number of sergeants, didn't break down the particular individual, it broke down the categories. I know this, unless I miss it, I don't see any breakdown of salaries in this budget book. Is there a reason why that is now deleted?
Mr. Chairman, I can respond. John Griffin, CFO. If you, uh, look, Mr. Tebohm, if you look at page three-hundred and thirty-three, this particular document begins a series of staffing positions.
Page, page which page?
Oh, okay, is that, is that?
And just for, uh,
Okay.
Mr. Tebohm's been following these budgets for, since I've been here before. This is an example of an area that, if you put more than one year in, and there's bargaining units that haven't settled, and some of our colleagues would, would use to look at a position and wonder why there was a thirty percent increase, or a twenty percent decrease. So we wanted to do here, as far as informing the public, and these are all the positions that are funded in this particular budget from a general fund perspective.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all on finance. We're gonna go to the police. Department one-fifty. Any questions on the Police Department budget?
Are any questions on the police department budget?
Does this police send fire or just police?
Just police.
Okay. Um, I asked this question, I think in, uh, I don't know, several years ago, and I think I repeated it another year, and I'm going to ask it again. In the budget, it shows a million dollars planned for overtime. I don't know exactly what an, a sort of average police salary is, but I'm pretty sure we could hire an awful lot of policemen for a million dollars. So if we are on a regular basis, and it was a million dollars, I don't know, four years ago, when I brought this up, if it's still a million dollars, we clearly should be able to plan for having a, uh, additional police person or two so that we're not running overtime. It would seem to me that is a smart choice. It saves money and we're not budgeting for unpreparedness. But I see it every time and I see it frankly for the fire as well, only it's worse. I just don't understand why we don't decide to hire appropriately rather than plan for overtime. Except that what I do know, because I live next door to a fireman, I know that the plan is to beef up your, your last hours so that you get the highest possible retirement. That's not good for the city taxpayers.
Mayor, you want somebody to answer that or?
Well, the PD would, would answer that, but I don't know if it was really a question or... You know, it's a 24-hour, the, the short answer, and I'm sure the, the department can answer more fully, but the, the short answer is the 24-hour department and, uh, you can't function without overtime. I mean, there are crimes, there are accidents, people are held over, it's just, uh, not something you can just send someone home, but the chief is there and he can answer in more detail.
Thank you. Michael Kerrigan, Chief of Police for Nashville. Uh, this is, it's a pretty complicated question that you asked. Um, and I have Karen Smith with me, our financial director. Like the mayor just said, it is a 24/7 operation. Uh, we can't predict necessarily when homicides will happen, when major crises or major incidents will happen. Um, we also have tr- training that is mandated, uh, by the state, by the federal government. Uh, so we have to account for that. And when you have those mandatory trainings, you have to take police officers off the street and you have to hire overtime to replace those positions on the street. Um, so I'll have, um, Ms. Smith explain a little bit more about the overtime and how it's broken down, but I will, I will also say regarding your pension costs, those pension rules have changed and that overtime no longer factors into the state pension. So the police officers, as of 2004, I believe, no longer get that, that benefit in. So I'll have her explain the overtime, the shortfalls of the overtime and kind of what that means.
Yes, Karen Smith, Business Manager. Um, we have payroll that covers the normal day-to-day payroll, then we have the overtime account. And the overtime account is broken up into different categories. We have, um, training, witness, investigative and coverage. And the amount that we're probably going to have the most of is going to be on the coverage because we have shift work. So you have first, second and third shift. Uh, there's going to be a numerous amount of overtime for covering those three shifts. Um, investigative is another category, uh, that is not fully funded. Um, what we do right now, it's been quite a few years that they have split the amount of overtime from our, um, payroll. The payroll is not, um, excuse you, the overtime is not fully funded. We're actually compensating from our, um, our payroll account. So when we have vacancies, that's actually funding part of the overtime account. So I can give you an example. On our overtime, we now have a $1.2 million, um, current FY21 overtime account. We spent $2 million on overtime because we're actually paying for our overtime through attrition, through our vacancies. Uh, we no longer have the vacancies. We are fully staffed right now. So there's a very complex, uh, budget. It's not straightforward when you would think of a normal, probably, um, non-municipal budget where you put a line for your payroll, you put your line for your overtime. That's not what we're working with on our municipal budget. Um, a little bit different in the fact that we're offsetting our overtime through our payroll and the uniqueness of law enforcement being shift worked, having investigative, having coverage, as the chief mentioned, having trainings. And, um, there's other miscellaneous overtime that could be, um, civilians, there's just different types of... Overtime is the nature of law enforcement. It's not the exception as you would have in private industry.
Excuse me, you cannot ask questions from me. We can't get you on the recording.
Thank you.
You have to come to a microphone and it's not your turn.
The answer is yes, it's at a higher rate.
Thank you.
Are we done with the police department?
No. So if it's at a higher rate...
You have to be at the microphone and you have to state your name.
If it's at a higher rate, then wouldn't it make sense?
Would you state your name and address again, please?
Christina McKinley, 6 South Gate Drive. Wouldn't it make sense, given, as I said, I've seen the same million dollar figure for years, wouldn't it make sense to hire in advance so that we have people available at a regular rate rather than a higher rate to support when you're doing training? To support when there are things which clearly happen, you, you know they do because you've had this million dollars for years? So wouldn't it make sense? I mean, I don't know, somebody back here said an average police officer is something around $70,000. Well, that's 14 or 15 police officers. Surely we could add a few permanent police officers that gives everyone a preparedness for training opportunities and every other kind of unexpected thing at the regular rate and benefit everyone. Benefit the police department, benefit the people who need the extra help for training and all the rest of it, which I think is important. I'm all for the boys in blue, but it is absurd that we pay twice as much or whatever the excess rate is because we don't prepare for what is obviously needed year after year after year, given that that is in the budget every year that I have looked at this. Makes no sense and it doesn't support our policemen in the way they should be. They shouldn't be scrambling for someone to fill in who, who, unless the purpose is to create higher pay. And if that's the case, that's not good for the citizens who are paying salaries.
Hold on one second, please. I'll answer that question.
Any one from the...
Well, while the chief is occupied, um, and I could give a short answer, which maybe... This has been, um, and hopefully Skip is... The chief's going to help him, so I will just answer, but, uh, let's see if this does it. Um, the, um, it's been looked at many times. Uh, there are additional costs associated with hiring an additional officer which aren't associated with overtime. Now you pay an entire, whole benefits package, another healthcare plan, et cetera, et cetera. In addition, it's just not as easy as that. Like if someone's on a crime, what are you going to do? Go home and bring someone else and that knows nothing about the crime and, you know? Even if you could interrupt the investigation, which probably you couldn't, uh, someone's at an accident, you know, hey, you go home, come in and get someone else. Uh, it's not so easy to interrupt an operation right in the middle like that. So there are various reasons why overtime is required and, uh, I'm sure it's more complicated than I've just expressed, but those are two of the one, you know, two of, you know, a few of the reasons. But again, when you hire someone new, there's, there's costs associated that you're not calculating.
And I would just like to echo, I, as much as I would love to have 100 new police officers, um, it's, it's unrealistic due to the unpredictability of police work. So the reality is it's actually cost-effective to pay a certain amount of officers overtime rather than, uh, hire new officers and pay the full benefits package. So it's a fine balance. I would be happy to sit with you in our financial office to explain that to you at later time if you wanted.
Paula Johnson, 15 Westbourne Drive. And I was just, Alderman Wilkshire and I were just shaking our heads because when I was on the board too, we talked about adding more police officers versus overtime and benefits. And sometimes it does work out better that you paying the overtime than bringing an officer in because if I remember correctly, it's not only just the benefits, it's the uniforms and everything else that goes along with the whole job description. But while you're here, chief, I just want to let you know, last year, when everything was happening in this country, best care set up for us to do, uh, back the blue and we stood outside in front of your police station and we were waving our flags and our banners and we were letting everybody know in this city that we were backing the blue. And we want to thank you for everything you've done for this city. And I remember even going home last year, I don't live that far from the police station. And, um, I want to say that I felt very safe in the community going by. The National Guard was there and you were there and we all felt safe and I did in this community. And I just want to give a heartfelt thank you to our men and women in blue here in Nashville. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other questions on police, we'll move to Fire, Department 152, Fire Department. Thank you, chief. Are there any questions regarding the Fire Department? Seeing none.
I just want to call attention.
Name and address again, please.
Christina McKinley, 6 South Gate Drive. I just want to call attention to the fact that, um, what I see in the budget book is two and a half million planned for overtime.
Mayor, do you want somebody to answer that or? Evening, chief.
Good evening, Brian Rhodes. Um, I have the pleasure of serving as your fire chief. Again, uh, everything the police chief said and Ms. Smith said, I echo all of that. Um, we have, we would love to have additional staff. Um, we have been, we have been trying to get one additional staff for the last four years. One, that hasn't happened. Um, the overtime happens because of training, injuries, sickness, vacation. Uh, this year, the, the overtime budget was extremely high because we had four firefighters at the state vaccination site seven days a week. We assisted public health with their vaccination sites. We assisted with, um, testing at, at the city sites. Um, we are getting this money back from the, from the government, from the state and the federal government. But on a regular basis, this, this is, as the chief said, we don't know, I can't pull people away from a fire. We had, we had a three alarm fire three weeks ago at 11:30 at night. We had one a week and a half ago at three o'clock in the afternoon. Um, we have what we have. We have the insurance service rating, ISO rating of class two that we have because of the, the force we have. Yes, i- i- in a perfect world, for us to hire more people and, and they call that the relief factor, that would be great if we could do that. Um, but it's just something, I think at the end of the day, when you look at, uh, um, we're talking here about pension costs, we're talking vacation, healthcare, all these benefits, it, I don't think it's cost-effective to do that.
Is this a follow-up to the same question?
It, it, it's, um, just a, a comment that perhaps because I am from the small business world and I can guarantee you, each and every one of you, I can guarantee you that there is no small business that doesn't look at a budget and make decisions based on what they anticipate. They do not plan year after year to pay higher costs overtime because they didn't hire someone. It just doesn't happen in small business. We go under because we don't have an endless resource of citizens picking up the tab. Maybe I'm missing something here. I get what the explanations are, but from a business, small business person's perspective, it's a bunch of hooey.
We're on the Fire Department Division.
Thank you. Daniel Richardson, 70 Berkeley Street, Nashville, New Hampshire. I want to draw your attention to wages and salaries, in particular wages, full-time. 2021 budget was $12,500,000 and the proposed is $13,700,000. So I was looking at earlier the, uh, page nine again, that shows a table for Fire Department. Uh, not just, this is like the total amount going up by 4%. So I'm looking at this, uh, wages only, wages only going up from 12 and a half to 13.7. That looks almost like a 10% or greater increase in wages. Am I correct?
Mr. Chairman, I may be able to help with this question and this again explains why things can't be percentage increases, but Mr. Richardson, if you look at line 51900 last year?
51900.
Yeah. Um, for comparative purposes, I would simply take that number and add it.
I can't find it.
Um, are you on page 150?
I'm on page 150.
Okay, 150. Below the subtotal of overtime, as you approach in benefits, there's a 51900 salary adjustments?
51900.
Salary adjustments of 1.146 million?
Could you show it?
In fiscal '21.
I see it.
The reason why the wages full-time last year was 12.5 million is they were waiting for their collective bargaining agreement to be approved by the Board of Aldermen. That number, 1.146, that, that was the contingency for negotiation that I spoke of earlier. That number needs to be added to the 12.5.
So really the budget book is showing, uh, on that wages full-time line is, uh, is before the award of the, uh, contract.
30 seconds.
Is that correct?
The 12.5 is before the award.
Okay.
The 1.1 is a combination of two fiscal years.
So, so once that awa- has been awarded, what would this percentage increase be for this year?
For fiscal '22?
Yeah.
Subject to check, it might be 3.5%.
So there was a 4% last year?
I have, I, close to, close to the four, um...
Dime's up.
When I took a look at the, uh, contract to be awa- to be awarded, it was like a four-year contract, total of 17% over that period of time.
Dime is up.
That's outrageous.
Fred Tebow, 24 Cheyenne, I have a question. I think I know the answer for the fire chief. Don't forget that. You mentioned overtime. Let's say you, let's say for example, you have a half a million dollars overtime, you're giving people vaccinations and the federal government gives all their money back. Meanwhile, you got paid overtime off the city's budget. What happens to the half, what happens to the money, mayor, this mayor, that the federal government reimburses you? Reimburses the, the Fire Department?
So, Mr. Chairman, to the extent... So, Mr. Chairman, to the extent, John Griffin, CFO, to the extent we're able to get reimbursed?
Yes.
This budget, once we're confident that FEMA and other funding sources will reimburse us, it would reduce this particular expense. It wouldn't reduce the budget, it would reduce the actual expenditures.
Wouldn't you count that as revenue? So wouldn't it follow the budget? See, part of my habit, the budget changes from year to year. Sometimes I go back to a previous year's budget, and I find that the reporting has changed slightly. Wouldn't you take a reimbursement from the federal government as a revenue?
When we make the filing for the FEMA reimbursements, we have to provide all the backup documentation.
Yeah.
What you're suggesting is, do you keep that excess cost in the budget?
Yeah.
And take in revenue?
Yeah.
So on a tax basis, it's tax neutral. It would seem to me that, well, we have two problems. One is the, if the numbers are significant enough, the, the budget for the particular division we're talking about would be overspent. So there would need to be more budget.
I'm not, I'm not trying to do your job, Mr. Griffin. I'm just suggesting that this year in particular, the federal government has showered the state and showered the city with money. COVID reimbursement money, COVID relief money, millions upon millions. State doesn't even know how to spend the money. All I'm suggesting that if the fire chief puts in overtime, fine, put in the overtime. When the federal government reimburses you, put it in as revenue.
30 seconds.
Either this budget or the next budget. But don't change the overtime numbers because it can be tracked from budget to budget otherwise. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to emergency preparedness. That's Departments 156 and 157, Emergency Management, Citywide Communications.
Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. I read, or I received an email from an anonymous source that the entire CERT team quit last year. That's, what is that, Community Emergency Response Team? And I was, because of abuse from the Public Health Department with the testing, or the, I guess it was for the COVID testing, you know, they were working under insane conditions. It was, it was a really bad situation. So I was wondering what's happening with the CERT team. Thanks.
CERT team? Justin?
Justin, can you answer that? Or?
Is that part of public health?
I don't, is Bobby here? I don't know.
It is where I'm there yet.
Community Emergency Response Team is CERT.
Is a microphone?
Yeah, I realize that, but I didn't see Bobby. You want to answer that? Bobby? This is Director Bagley of the Public Health and Community Services.
Good evening. Bobby Bagley from the Division of Public Health and Community Services, Director. The CERT is the Community Emergency Response Team, and after the incident during the summer, the CERT manager decided that they were no longer going to participate in public health events after that event. So they haven't been on board with us since then.
Thank you. Is this a follow up?
Yeah. Yeah, Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart. So I was wondering if the CERT team was working with Emergency Management still? If they're still helping with the city? They're completely not helping at all? Okay. It sounds like a great loss for the city. I'm sorry to hear that, but glad to hear more.
Justin Kate's Emergency Management Director. So the CERT team would support any of the city divisions during an emergency. Fire Department, Police Department, Office of Emergency Management. The administrative management of that group is under Public Health. So we don't manage the day-to-day operations or the training or anything like that. But what we would do is if Emergency Management or if another agency requested their support, we would reach out to Bobby, Director Bagley, for support in whatever task was necessary. And whether they were available or not, they would perform an assessment to see if they would be able to provide that service or not. So that's, that's the current status of other departments' use of that CERT team.
Follow up. So that means that since they're not working with Public Health, they're not working with anyone? They're not available to us as a city? Is that correct?
Yeah, if there's no leadership within CERT, then I'm assuming that they're not available to other departments, same as they wouldn't be available to Public Health.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next division, Other Public Safety. Department 159, Hydrant Fees, Fire Protection, and 162, Street Lighting. Any questions on that? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Public Health, Community Services Division. Community Services in 171, Community Health 172, Environmental Health 173, Welfare Administration 174, and Welfare Assistance 175.
Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. I am concerned because the Public Health Department has on their website that they welcome all gender identities, and I saw it on the Public Health van too. And I know they, the Public Health Director's been very concerned about, according to her newsletters, that everyone, that the Nashua residents are following the science, the science about COVID, the science about vaccines, the science about other public health issues. But when you're saying that you welcome all gender identities, that is...
Excuse me, is this a specific budget question?
Well, I mean, I just question the running of the whole department. I think the department is being mismanaged when I see these kinds of issues.
So you have a question?
Yeah, I want to know, you know, what, I just question whether this, this department is being properly managed when we have someone, we have the director saying they welcome all 100, we're up to 112 gender identities, which are, it's just mumbo jumbo, and our whole public health is branded with these messages about the gender identities, when we have actual public health problems that need to be addressed, like COVID and, you know, lead poisoning and a gazillion other serious health problems, but we're going woke, our public health department's going woke and reaching out to gender identities like non-binary and, you know, I don't even want to begin to list them all, it's ridiculous. And I'm, I'm just very disappointed to see how this department's being run, and especially now we've lost our CERT team. I mean, this is, this is a travesty. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Public Works Division. That's Departments 160, Public Works, Administration, Engineering, 161, Street Department, and 177, Parks and Rec.
Good evening. Paula Johnson again, still here in Nashua at the high school. I've got a couple of questions here on Public Works as I go. You know, this budget isn't the easiest one to follow because it used to be that you had the director, the superintendent of streets and everything. Now you got to keep flipping through pages here, and I'm trying to figure everything out. Director of Public Works, she spends, sometimes it's all mumbo jumbo here, 20% of the time she spends wastewater, trying to find all this. Executive Assistant, 15% of the time on wastewater. I dropped all my papers here. This is only half, I'll wait till Wednesday comes with my board. I got a folder full of stuff. Let me put this down before. I don't know, sometimes I wonder why I do so much research on stuff. Let's see. I'm trying to figure it out too, this whole budget. Superintendent of Streets, I see is 106,343. That, that person just stays in the Street Department, it looks like. Let's see. Operations Supervisor, that one, trying to look across. Trying to figure that out, if that person stays all the time in that department. So maybe I can ask the questions to the director or somebody, and then if I give up my three minutes, I'll just get back in line. If there's nobody in line, oh, I'll go behind Mrs. Ordolano to ask some more questions because I'm kind of confused here because it looks like the Director of Public Works, 70% of the time, I guess she's the Director of Public Works, 10% she's someplace else for $10,888, 70% she's $104,216, and then there's 20% for $29,776 in solid waste streets for $148,880. And then the Director of the Street Department, I want to know if that person's in charge of the plowing because I want to complain about, this year the plowing was pretty bad, we didn't get out there when we should have. And I just want to know how many of these directors actually were working from their office during the pandemic? Because people have offices, like you do, Mayor, that you're not directed with people. So I'd like to know, even in the Street Department and every, how many people were actually at their desk working the whole time that their employees were out there working also doing their jobs? I guess this really applies to the whole city. So if the mayor's not in his office, why would his employees be in the office?
Thank you. Lisa Fotod, Director of Public Works. Mrs. Johnson, the majority of my division worked through the entire pandemic, with the exception, there were a few people that worked remotely for a very short period of time, and also at Engineering and Administration. Some of those folks worked remotely because they could, but the vast majority, including myself and the Assistant Director, were here throughout the pandemic.
I remember I had a call Engineering, and I had a call to get some information, and nobody got back to me because Engineering was not in the office. And I can't remember what it was because last year was, I don't want to remember it very much. So you were in the office every day?
Yes, I was.
You were in the office every day, and everybody else was in the office every day, except for Engineering?
Well, there may have been a few exceptions where we were, we may have been working remotely, but by and large, yes, we were there.
Everybody was there. And why this, why was last year winter the street torn plowed that well?
I have not heard any...
Your time is up, and you've asked more than one question.
I'm surprised to hear that, Mrs. Johnson. I've heard very few complaints about plowing. In fact, I've heard many compliments about the work that the Street Department did this past winter.
No, I thought last year was pretty bad, pretty bad. Thank you. Well, if she's answering a question for me, then, you know, it'd be rude for me to leave. Thank you.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. You know, I'm going to be brief here, but in looking at the staffing in Public Works, my concern is you really don't have the engineering staff that you should have. I, I think you're missing on people who are more qualified to address the road issues and design issues and new projects. And I look at the positions, and it just looks like we're missing some positions. And I've watched, you know, projects get done where, to me, the analysis and the engineering work on the roads isn't there to support the project that's being done. And I look at the, over at the Henry Hanger development, I think we had and have more road issues over there that got, you know, swept away and not addressed because we didn't either listen to our engineer or we didn't have the engineering support we needed. And I think it's a real weakness in this Public Works budget, and I think it ends up costing us a good bet. I would encourage you to strengthen your engineering personnel and improve those qualifications and the analysis that you're getting when you take on these projects. Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else, we'll go on to Public Services Division, Pinewood Cemetery, Woodlawn Cemetery, Edgewood and Suburban Cemeteries. Is there anyone that has a question? Thank you, Director Fotod. Seeing none, we'll go on to Public Library. That's Department 179. Any questions on the Public Library?
Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. I just wanted to speak on management of the library as well. I, I just, my compliments to the public trustees, to public library trustees and the public library director, you know, they've been, they've been listening to me and responding to, well, not just me, but our concerns about the library, but in making book purchases that I request. But I'm still very concerned. I went in there to look for books about transgender children, believe it or not, and teens, and there was a huge stack. And I just wanted to, you know, warn the city residents that the libraries...
Excuse me, that's not, you're not asking a budget question. You're commenting on something outside of the city budget. If you have discussions about what's in the public library, you need to talk to the librarian.
Well, I just, I just wanted to say the man, I mean, I'm, I've been very, I'm very appreciative of the management of the library, but my concerns are their book purchases, that there's, there's much harm being done to children if they are reading these books and teens. And I just wanted to make the city residents aware of the dangers of what's, the library is promoting to the kids of our city and the teens. Thanks.
We'll move on to Community Development Division. Department 153, Building Inspection, 155, Code Enforcement, 170, Waterways, Hydraulic Operations, 181, Community Development, 182, Planning and Zoning, 184, Urban Programs, and 186, Transportation. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll go on to Education. Department 191, Schools.
Daniel Richardson, 70 Berkeley Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. On page 263, one light item here, longevity. So for fiscal year '21, it was $385,000. So far, of that $385,000 of budget, you spent $439,000 through March. So it's going to be a lot higher than that. So you spent more money than you had, and now you're proposing $570,000, an even higher number. So it looks like it went up, say, about 40% in longevity. So my question is, what is it that you did not plan for on that line item?
Now, the School Department would have to answer that question.
Yes, we, they spend, they negotiate their own contracts, they, they handle their own funds, so that's a question for the Board of Education.
That's great.
We only, we only give them a bottom line number.
That's great. I'd like to hear from the Board of Education.
That's, they're not here this evening.
Isn't the superintendent here to defend the budget?
I don't see him. And the superintendent? And the Superintendent's an acting Superintendent at the moment.
It's a budget hearing. You don't have the Superintendent here? It's a major failing.
All right, we'll move on to the next division. Debt Service, Contingency and Interfund Transfers. Department one ninety-three, Debt Service, one ninety-four, Contingency, and one ninety-eight, one ninety-eight, Interfund Transfers.
Um, so we're past education. I just got out of my seat.
I can't hear you. You just-
We're, we're past education. Can I make my comment here?
Go ahead.
It's Christina McKinley, six South Gate Drive. Um, I, I'm sure this was intended to be a positive, but I just thought it was utterly sad. This is page, uh, two eighty, I believe. Two sixty, a picture that we're, our budget, our education budget, went to preschool, looking at screens. We've got on page two forty, little kids wearing masks. We have, um, page ninety-one, little preschool girl looking at screens. What I do know about education, I started my career as a teacher many decades ago. And I sure as heck know, based on any parent I have spoken to, that particularly the little kids, this has been a disaster for them. You can, you can put a bow on it any way you want. But teachers should have, in my opinion, been in school. And had we all behaved in the same way that many city employees did, including teachers, had our grocery store workers decided to not show up-
Excuse me, is there a budget related? Excuse me.
Had our pharmacy workers decided not to show-
Excuse me. Is there a budget-related question? Because you're talking of things that are controlled by the School Department and the Board of Education.
About fifty-three percent of my taxes go to schools. So this is a budget issue. If I'm paying for something that I didn't get the service or effective service, fifty-three percent of my taxes went towards that service. If I walked into Home Depot and bought a refrigerator and what was sent to me was a box with no doors, I wouldn't pay full price. So what I'm suggesting is a school budget should, in my opinion, we should have a rebate because the vast majority of children did not, could not have gotten the education that they should have, could have over the last eighteen months. So yes, it is a budget issue and it's a budget issue in my household because fifty-three percent, according to John Griffiths, you know, on March twenty-fifth in our conversation, fifty-three percent of my taxes-
Your time is expired. Okay. Next item is Capital Improvements. One thousand and one, Capital Equipment. Seeing no one, next division is Enterprise Funds, Revenue and Appropriations. Six thousand, Solid Waste Fund, Estimated Revenues, and six thousand, Solid Waste Fund Appropriations.
So, T Boom, twenty-four Cheyenne, that's another one I broke out. I did the, uh, six-year projection of the, uh, solid waste of wastewater. Now, I understand you did not do the projection, Mayor, because these are fee-based as opposed to tax-based. But I can claim the fee and the tax, tax and the fee. All money we paid for this aid. So, this may be a question to, uh, Public Works Director. Not sure. Solid waste, the, uh, average annual for six, for seven years, for six years, a seven point six percent. It is now three point nine percent increase. That's solid waste. But wastewater, which had an average annual increase over six years of six point nine percent, is now thirty-eight point seven percent. Wastewater, thirty-eight point seven percent. I didn't go through the details of the budget this time. I didn't look at any details this time, but can somebody explain to me why wastewater, wastewater went up by thirty-eight point seven percent?
Well, we have the Superintendent here, but the bottom line is wastewater is heavily, heavily regulated by various environmental agencies, including the EPA and DES, EPA at the federal level, DES at the state level. And these expenditures are required. We have a consent decree with, uh, the feds. Uh, we have, there's increasing, uh, requ- you know, requirements. There's the issue of the sewers and the separation or the non-separation.
I understand that.
All, all these things, were we to refuse to undertake some of these things, which cost more money, we'd be sued by these environmental agencies. So the smartest thing is to comply with the regulations, even though it costs more money.
Understand that. That's a general question. My, I have a specific question. Why did it go up thirty-eight point seven? What made it go up thirty-eight point seven percent? Can the Director, is the Director still here?
Thirty seconds.
Mr. Boucher is here. Now, he hasn't been here the entire six years, so Ms. Fotod will come up as well, but-
Well, I hope he knows how to spell C S O.
He does. He knows how to spell it. He wishes he didn't, but he does.
So the question is, when the six-year average for sixty, fiscal sixty to fiscal twenty-two was, uh, six point nine percent of six years, why is it suddenly, and C S O been going a long time? C S O been going on for, for decades. Why is it now thirty-eight point seven percent?
We got to turn this on. Dave Boucher, Wastewater Superintendent. Uh, we have had studies done throughout the facility. Uh, like the mayor said, we are heavily regulated by the EPA and the state. Uh, we do have a dissent decree. We have a permit to discharge into the river. We have, uh, permits for air, permits for sludge. All these things, more regulations are coming down to us. Uh, you're familiar with PFOS, uh, perfluoro alkali substances. It's a big concern. Uh, for the wastewater facility, we have, we, we have a management company that takes care of our sludge. It's a byproduct of the wastewater. Uh, so the concern is, right now, we have beneficial reuse of our sludge. It goes to farmlands. Uh, that might not be an option in the near future. So we, we're looking at different ways of treating our sludge. Uh, some other things we have to look at in our permit that is currently in a draft form for phosphorus, for instance. Uh, if we have to meet the limits that this, that the EPA is imposing on us, it's going to be an additional, uh, build on to the wastewater facility to meet those regulations. Uh, so all these things, plus we have, the facility dates back to the fifties. There's still parts of the facility that are, are aged. Uh, all the wastewater that comes to the facility is corrosive, so-
I'm still looking for a specific answer.
Yeah.
Maybe the Director can answer.
Right, so part, part of our study, you know, some of these things come out, unfortunately, they come out all at once. And so we're trying to prepare for all these, uh, regulations that are coming down and still maintain our, our process to meet our current permit.
It went up by almost eight million dollars this year. Whereas the average in previous years had been like one point four million.
Fred, we-
So what made it go up so drastically?
We, we did a very extensive presentation to the Board of Aldermen that explained in great detail all of the projects that we're working on, um, including our, our CoGen project, um, that, that is almost completed. We've, uh, embarked on, uh, our pump, a pump station upgrade. We've already done half of the pump stations. We're now doing the other half of the pump stations. We had primary tank upgrades. There's a number of projects that we have done and will be doing in the near future uh, that contribute to the increase. And, and the vast majority of that is permitting. There are things that are required by the EPA.
Yeah, but typically you, you, you bond, these big projects, you bond.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So I still, bond being the purpose of that is to spread the, spread the cost of twenty years, thirty years. I still don't understand, is there a single line item that made the thing go up at seven point eight million dollars?
There's not a single line item. There's many capital projects. And, and they are listed in the debt service schedule in the budget. And it, there's also, um, in, in the capital improvements, it'll show you all of the projects that are being, they're, they're being funded by the operating budget and being funded by bonding. It is in the budget and it does show everything.
All set, Mr. T Boom?
I guess I have to read the budget, but it seems like an awful lot of money all in one year.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I can, uh, address this particular issue as well. Um, Mr. T Boom, the, on page two ninety-four is the Infrastructure Improvements that are going to be funded by bonding, which are listed on page two ninety-six.
Two ninety-four?
Two ninety-four, as Director Fotod just indicated. So that's the, uh, infrastructure improvements funded by bonds. As she indicated, the projects are clearly articulated or shown on page two ninety-six. So that's on the expenditure side. And if we take a look at the revenue side, um, on page two ninety-one, you'll see general obligation bond proceeds of a, of a like amount. So in this particular case, the cost of the operation went up, but so didn't the revenue. And it's a self-contained fu- uh, enterprise fund.
Well, I see, I see here on page two ninety-six, you got eleven million dollars of capital improvements in twenty-two. And it shows zero in twenty-one.
And so, um, Mr. Chairman, if I may-
Yes.
A lot of the amounts in twenty-one were funded by cash. And as Director Fotod indicated, there was a comprehensive presentation made in the January, February timeframe to the Board of Aldermen.
I'll, I'll let the, I'll let the Aldermen figure this one out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Richardson, seventy Berkeley Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. I have, uh, commentary on the wastewater situation. We, with all Pollyannic view, the Board of Aldermen purchased Burke Street property, four and a half million dollars several years ago. And everything was going to be hunky-dory, uh, expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. And then realized, uh, didn't really do the homework. It's going to cost a lot of money to fix that place up. So we put it on market. We had some purchase-sale agreement. That fell through. So we got an asset sitting there. What are we doing with that? How, how is that going to be used with the wastewater treatment? How is that asset going to be contributing to the benefit of wastewater financially?
Well, first of all-
Let me, let me just, so the, first of all, this was purchased under a previous administration.
I'm not blaming you. You were an Alderman, though.
I was an Alderman. Uh, and there were some projections given which turned out not to be true, but, or accurate. Let's put it that way. But, um, so what's happened is, uh, several acres, two, three acres were subdivided off of the Burke Street property and added to the treatment plant property area. Uh, so that if this phosphorus treatment is required, there would be room to accomplish that. And there is a closing, and the, the purchase price was not four and a half. It was, it was four one or four two, something like that. Um, uh, or even four million. We'd have to get the exact number. But the, there's a closing scheduled, uh, which was supposed to take place today and we think will occur, but, uh, there was a death of somebody instrumental in all this. Um, there, it may, it, we expect it'll occur within the next week or so, uh, which will realize three seven, three, three million seven. So in the end, getting that extra land costs like three hundred thousand dollars.
So you're, you're talking about this next sale being a smaller footprint? Smaller number of acreage?
Yeah, yeah, it's a little smaller than what we bought.
So the amount that is going to be used for wastewater treatment purposes is how big?
It's, uh, what is it, like two and a half or three acres?
Two and a half acres.
Two and a half acres.
And that's sufficient for our purposes?
Yes.
I have another question, but I'll let someone else talk if anybody else wants to talk. My turn again. Um, on solid waste, so I'm looking at page two, my eyes are bad, let's see, two eighty-four. Um, down at the bottom, solid waste appropriations, ten million dollars and change, less revenues, uh, minus five million dollars and change. Amount subsidized by the general fund, five, five million dollars. This has been going on for a number of years. I've always asked the question, why don't we increase the tipping fees? Uh, why are we having this coming out of the general fund? Uh, I don't believe that people coming, contractors coming and dumping in our landfill are paying their fair share. And I've heard the excuse that say, well, it's market rate. I don't believe it. So maybe you could have, uh, an explanation of that?
Sure, um, so-
I'd love to get more money out of that.
Uh, do you?
I, I'm- Maybe we could justify more, I don't know, but I have to listen to the experts.
Uh, our tipping fee is above market rate, okay? Market rate at landfills is somewhere between sixty-five and seventy dollars a ton. We're at eighty. We wouldn't, we wouldn't, we're getting very little, uh, to begin with, um, of the waste. A lot of it is, is being, uh, taken to, uh, the hauler's own transfer stations. So if we increase the rate above eighty dollars, we, we wouldn't get any. The reason that we need to subsidize is because there are really three profit centers. Um, there's the recycling center, there's collections, and then there's the landfill, okay? All of those are within solid waste. If we were trying to run it, the, uh, recycling center is, is a true recycling center. In other, other words, we char- we didn't charge five dollars for, uh, a permit and took everything else in for free. If we were charging for everything and we were operating the landfill, then the taxpayers probably would not have to subsidize, okay? But because collections is involved in that, there, it, it comes at a cost. And that's, that's about five million dollars and that's what it averages.
She's, she's saying that it costs money to pick up the garbage and that's part of the cost of the subsidy. That, you know, they pick up the, the garbage trucks, the garbage crews and everything that-
Soft yard waste pickup.
Soft yard waste, all that stuff is included in that cost. So there is a service that, you know, it's more than just the cost of the landfill proper. It's, uh, the, the pickup operation.
Back a number of years ago when we had-
Including also recycling. So it's recycling, regular garbage and, um, and soft yard-
And bulky items.
So we, when we first opened up this landfill, it was projected to have, uh, over forty years of life to it. Uh, that's a cost. That's fungible. So how much is left?
You have exceeded your time, but you can ask that last question.
Thank you.
We, I estimate we have roughly between forty and fifty years left. If we get, right now, we're in the process of permitting phase four, which is the, the final phase of the landfill. If, if we are successful in getting that permitted, which I believe we will be, um, then we'll have another forty to fifty years.
And which phase is that?
Phase four.
Phase four?
We're current, we're currently operating right now in phase three and we're, we're in the process of permitting phase four.
That's the last phase, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
So the clock's ticking?
Yes.
And that's a cost?
Paula Johnson.
Paula Johnson, fifteen Westbourne Drive. Question, on the landfill. How come, and I've thought about the question this, I think, for years, how much does it cost to get a sticker to go into a landfill?
Five, for residents?
For residents.
Five dollars.
Five dollars. Five dollars. I don't like to raise anything, but there's twelve months in a year, why wouldn't you just charge everybody twelve bucks to help cover the costs another way? I don't like to raise anything, but, and how many people sneak into the landfill that don't belong, that get, that take a sticker from somebody else?
While that may happen, I think we're doing a pretty good job of preventing that from happening. We do have two scale operators now, and, uh, they've been very diligent in watching.
And all your trucks, that are the green deal trucks, and when their lifetime is gone, what do we do with those trucks?
We either keep them as backline trucks, or we trade them.
You trade them?
Mm-hmm.
And what are we getting for trade on them?
Well, it, it all depends, uh, Mrs. Johnson, on what type of truck it is, and how long we've had it, and its condition, and that varies.
What about the trash trucks? How many have we turned over lately? How many have we sold at auction?
I, I don't think we've sold any at auction recently, but we can bring the superintendent up to speak to that.
Jeff LaFleur, Superintendent, solid waste. Currently, everything that we've, uh, purchased in the past, uh, three to four years, we have them on backline trucks right now. We're saving them so we can, uh, use them when other trucks go down.
Okay, so, and how about older trucks? Dump trucks and all those trucks, what's happening with them? Have we sold, have we kept them all, or are they done with?
We...
That they rotted away, the undercarriages?
We, we currently saved a bunch of them in the back, we were taking parts off of them, and anything that was unusable or rusted out, we sold to scrap metal.
Okay, and what is the return on the trash trucks because they're a different, um, they're more of a green truck, am I correct? Like the, the gas that we're using?
All of our trucks right now are green.
Okay.
We had two that were, that we, uh, sent out to scrap metal because there was no interest in buying them.
So on the green trucks, to do a trade-in, can we do it, or we better off with a diesel truck on a trade-in?
Uh, depends on the market, and a lot of companies are now switching over to C N G right now, so there is a market out there, but right now, we haven't had any, uh, any need to trade any in, as of right now, because we're keeping them all on backline.
And so when is the next time that we have to buy trucks?
I currently think I have one or two on this year, but those will become backline trucks for repairs in, uh, busy times of the year.
Thank you.
For Tebow, twenty-four Cheyenne, I think I figured out the eight million, but I'd like you to just confirm. On the wastewater, you could probably answer it, don't have to get the superintendent back. I see on page two ninety-four, um, now, let's go, let's go to page two ninety-six, I see on the fiscal twenty-one, three point three million, and that is for capital improvements. I see for fiscal twenty-two, eleven million, rounding it off, capital improvements. When I go to page two ninety-four, I see the three million dollars on the twenty-two one, on the left-hand column, and I see the eleven million dollars on the twenty-two. What I don't understand now is, it says debt proposed. What exactly does that mean?
I, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you, what you just, towards the end, what did you say? What, what does what mean?
So if you, so you get the three million on page two ninety, on page two ninety-six for twenty-two one.
Yeah.
It does eleven million dollars for twenty-two for capital improvements. It's brought over to page two ninety-four, we see the three million dollars on the left-hand column for twenty-two one, but on the twenty-two, instead of saying that's an expense, it says debt proposed. What does that mean, debt proposed?
I, I can answer that, Mr. Chairman, John Griffin, CFO. This is the array of projects that, instead of paying cash for any of them, we're gonna bond them. So it's just a choice of words that...
So you...
We will be bonding this...
You're gonna spend eleven million dollars on bonds?
Correct.
On the payments for the bonds?
Eleven million is the debt, is the, is the proposed bond amount. Over time will be, depending on the years...
Wait a minute, that's not the one-time payment, that is the total debt?
That's a total debt.
It's not the payment, it's the amount that will be borrowed to do those projects.
So you're gonna bond eleven million dollars?
Correct.
Then why is it shown as an expense of eleven million? A bond only should show, it is a total, it should only show for the payment, for the year you spend that bond. Why is it shown as eleven million dollar expense?
We decided, um, as the presentation, to couple the eleven million to of infrastru- of, um, infrastructure improvements to be bonded with the, as I mentioned earlier, and the revenue bond proceeds. Page two ninety-one, so they offset. We're not gonna have any, we're not gonna have any capital projects paid by cash.
Your time is expended.
I guess, I just, I'm totally lost on this. I don't understand how you can take debt payment, which is eleven million dollars total debt, and put this in as a one-year expense.
But he's saying there's an offset. He's saying that elsewhere, there's a revenue item of that same amount showing money coming in, so that it, it, uh, it balances out.
The problem with this kind of approach, Mayor, and this is a real defect, this is a, this can't possibly pass an audit.
This can't pass what?
That's why you have an eight million dollar difference, because you're bonding eight million dollars more, you're bonding eight million dollars more this year than last year of capital improvements. But an eight million dollars more is gonna be spent over, let's say, twenty years' period of payback. You're showing it as a one-time expense.
But there's an offsetting, there's an offsetting revenue item.
As the mayor indicates, you have a choice, you can either leave the two lines blank, in other words, have zeros where the eleven million is.
What you typically do is, you have, and I look at solid waste, typically have a, a table of all the bonded expenses, the years you paid them, what the payments are on any particular year, and for two, twenty, twelve, twenty-two, what, twenty-two, twenty-two, you show the total payments for a bond. You don't say the phase value for the bond, you show the payment structure, the schedule. I think this cannot possibly pass an audit. Again, let the Aldermen figure, but they can't figure it out either. I think you need to take a look at that.
All right, we're gonna move on to special revenue funds, revenue appropriations, city special revenue funds, and school special revenue funds. Are there any questions on special revenues? Seeing none, we'll go on to supplemental information, which includes the Nashua Airport Authority, the capital equipment reserve plan replacements, expendable trust and reserve funds funded by appropriations, and expendable trust funds funded by contributions. Are there any questions?
Just a comment, it's a very happy comment, under the special contributions, there's an item seventy-five, seventy-nine. I'm surprised it's still there. The memorial donated to you about four thousand dollars or five thousand dollars, it must have been spent because the sprinkles were put in. It shows a balance of six seventy-one remaining. That's amazing. It's a good, it's a good thing to have, I just wonder if that's really a true number. The other thing I would like to recommend is, somewhere you look into, taking the thirty-two thousand dollars that's for Rotary Common, has been sitting there for years, the Rotary Levant money's been sitting there for years and years and years. Why don't you take that money, combine it with a wall, combine it with the memorial, my memorial money, and build a bridge from one side of the Rotary to the other side of Rotary, and across Salt Lake Brook. I asked Mayor Lozo, and she almost did it, and I'm asking you again, Mayor, don't you take a look at that? The money just sits here, year after year, and is doing absolutely nothing.
Christina McKinley, six Southgate Drive. Just a final budget comment, and it's really more to do with who's here than actual numbers. I would hope that, for any budget, that your office would work harder to reach out to regular citizens who are paying the taxes to support the budget. Most of the people who showed up are all city employees, very few people here are not. And I think it's a reflection of either disinterest in our city, or just feeling beaten down that the taxes are just going to keep going up and up. Either way, it's not good that we have this few people who aren't city employees here listening, interested, and hopeful that you're interested in what we have to say.
Okay, that wraps up the divisions. Alderman O'Brien, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to table R dash twenty-one dash one forty-two.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to table R twenty-one, one forty-two, which is the budget. Would the clerk please, oh, excuse me, all in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, motion carries. Alderman O'Brien, do you have another motion?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make the motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned at ten twenty-nine P M.